Don't believe there are, but if anyone has got apologies, please let me know.
There'll be one from councillor Walker, I presume, Mayor Tim?
Ah, yes, you may well be right. Um, councillor O'Gorman, thank you. Uh, so we'll note an apology from councillor Walker, who's currently on leave of absence. Someone move the apologies.
Um, sorry about that. I'm going to have to leave briefly, but I'll return.
Okay, all good.
Happy to move it.
Moved councillor Turley, seconded councillor McGurk. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
James Carey. Right, um, couple of housekeeping matters. So if we come to voting, uh, we'll use the red, green ticks and red crosses. So if people can familiarise themselves with the use of those tools, should they not already know? Uh, if you are going to leave, can you let the governance advisor know? Uh, thank you for noting that earlier councillor Noonan. Um, if you use the raise your hand icon or try and keep track of it, it's a very busy screen, there's a lot of people, so apologies if we miss, um, somebody, but if you do feel that you haven't been, uh, picked up on, just shout out or something. Um, we'll break ten minutes every hour. Uh, at an appropriate time, hopefully. We are live streaming, or this is being live streamed, so, uh, the live stream continues during breaks. Uh, so please be careful about turning off your sound and video or anything that you might say, uh, in relation to anything during the breaks, because you are live. Uh, and so the normal Zoom protocols apply. So just before I hand over to, uh, the council staff, so this is the culmination of a series of five workshops. There is a huge amount of information that has been covered during the course of those conversations. There's obviously also been conversations with EWE and an opportunity for landowners to, um, put in, uh, suggestions and proposals for different areas of land that particularly has applied across the Tasman region, of which there are a lot of, uh, there have been a lot of proposals put in and assessed. And really, at the end of today, it's the opportunity for the wider public to have their input say, on everything that's being proposed. Uh, I'd just like to highlight the fact that this is, there is a limited opportunity to make significant changes. Uh, obviously, you will have read the agendas and the, uh, resolutions. Um, so, um, significant changes at this late stage of the process, uh, are going to be particularly problematic. If we're to meet the timeframes, um, that have been, uh, worked on today, so please bear that in mind. Uh, and with that, I would just like to hand over to the council staff to introduce the day, um, the process from here and any key points they wish to make before we start into the agenda proper. So who's leading that conversation?
So that's me first, Mayor King. Yes, yeah, thank you very much for that. So I'm going to just say, um, highlight a few things and then Chris will also, um, just mention a few words and draw attention to a few, um, typographical errors and things like that. Please let me know if you can't hear me. If I don't hear anything, I presume you can hear me okay. So yesterday, we've reached the milestone of having, um, a draft future development strategy to consult our community on. What we're actually consulting on is called the Statement of Proposal under the Local Government Act. And that comprises the summary documents, which is at pages twenty-seven to forty-three of your agenda. The draft future development strategy itself, which is at pages forty-four to a hundred. And then we also have the technical report, which is the large report that's appended, which starts at page a hundred and two. So as Mayor King mentioned, to date, we have worked very closely with EWE, with stakeholders, which are largely government agencies and councillors, and we had our first round of community engagements, in October last year. But this upcoming consultation period that starts on March the fourteenth really is the opportunity now to get some feedback from our community, on the proposal. The proposal is of course still draft, so things can change. Um, as you know, we've had a very tight programme to get the documents to the stage they are at this date. Um, and that tight programme continues, um, with us hoping to, um, you know, conclude matters by the end of July. The council staff are recommending a statement of proposal, which includes the potential for a new community, both near Tasman Village and also at Hera. I'm just going to briefly just, um, touch on how we assess the sites and how sites that have made it through the stage, how that actually happened. So it was really a two, a two-stage process. Um, we initially analysed the opportunities and constraints for the whole region. And then we worked on those draft outcomes, you may remember that we've workshopped, and we workshop those outcomes with our community, with EWE and with stakeholders as well. The second part of the process was really around the multi-criteria assessment analysis, MCA, which you'll see appearing in the documentation quite a lot. We had over, about, we had about two hundred sites in total for Nelson and Tasman that we assessed through that process. We had twenty different assessment criteria, which are in the documents, which we assess each site against. And those two hundred sites did include the two thousand and nineteen adopted future development strategy sites as well. So all the sites have been reevaluated. After that assessment process was complete, we did identify some what we called no-go constraints. And those no-go constraints were things like highly productive land, where the health of water bodies was going to be adversely affected, si- um, serious natural hazards, and also where we had cultural significance, um, that was highlighted by EWE. So if a site, um, came up against any of those constraints, then the site was ruled out regardless of how it scored. There are a couple of exceptions to that process. We've highlighted in the documents, the sites near Tasman Village, do have EWE significance at this stage, and that's something that we're still working through with Tiataiawa on. And, um, also there are a couple of business sites proposed at Brightwater and Wakefield, which are on productive land, and we've highlighted that in the document as well, and we're asking our community, do they feel that we need those sites, even though they're on productive land? So that was the process for assessing the sites. Just lastly, want to draw some attention to, um, changes that have occurred since the last workshop that we had in January. You may have noticed a slight difference now in the presentation of the proposal. So previously, we were talking about, um, a preferred option and other options, being the, the Tasman Village and Hera proposals. Now, the documentation, um, presents everything as a proposal. And we have a, we still have differentiation, we have the core part of the proposal, which is a focus on state highway six growth, largely on state highway six. And we have the secondary part of the proposal, which is a potential expansion near Tasman Village and Hera Village. And just finally, um, from me, uh, as I've mentioned before, there are concerns of Tiataiawa, around the expansion of Tasman Village, those three sites near Tasman Village. However, the CEO of Tiataiawa has endorsed the wording that we have in these documents. Um, the discussions regarding the significance of those three sites to EWE are ongoing at a governance level. I'm going to hand over to Chris now, who's going to just touch on some amendments.
Uh, morning, everyone. You can all hear me? Yep, um, so, a cou- couple of things. Um, first, we're required under the Local Government Act to provide some analysis of alternatives. Um, sorry, and the referenced in, on page thirty-nine of the summary document. Um, we've also made some changes to the resolutions, um, just to reflect some of the things that have cropped up since, um, the agenda was run. Um, the, the primary one that you'll need to be aware of is that we haven't received nominations for the EWE representatives yet. Um, they're expected to come between now and when the hearings, uh, occur. So we've added a, um, uh, an extra item there in the, in the, um, resolutions to allow the mayors of each council to essentially confirm those nominations when they come in. Um, the, also in the, the agenda that you were sent out, there were, the numbering wasn't quite right for the resolutions, that's been tidied up as well. Um, and I think that's pretty much it for the resolutions themselves. As far as I can tell. Um, so after today, we're, we're going to, out to the community to ask them what their thoughts are on this, um, draft Nelson Tasman Future Development Strategy. And we've got quite a, um, a lineup of, um, public consultation events, um, a whole series of, um, webinars and, obviously, uh, advertisements and online and in the paper. Um, if we get, um, any significant sort of submissions on alternative spatial growth patterns, we'll need to assess those against our, uh, the various, both councils' significance and engagement policies. And we need to, we'll need to think carefully about whether or not, um, any changes that might come out of those significant enough that we need to reconsoct, and obviously, if, if that was the case, there'd be, um, some real challenges around the timeframes that we have, um, available. Um, with that end of July deadline that, um, Jackie referred to earlier. Um, other than that, I think that's me. Jackie, was there anything else that you wanted to add?
No, I think it's everything at this stage, Chris.
Right, I thank you for the introduction. Uh, so now really it's, uh, open up for discussion from councillors. Uh, if there is a willingness to move the resolutions, then obviously, uh, people are able to do that. Uh, at this stage, though, it might be good just to go around and see if people have questions of clarification on any of the key points contained, uh, within the documentation, before we get to the point of moving and seconding resolutions. So do people have, uh, queries? Councillor Deputy Mayor Edgar.
Uh, thank you. Uh, yes, so just first question is just a clarification, so, um, and, when Jackie Deans was introducing, she was talking about Hera and Tasman Village. But in the proposal, it's also got Brayburn Road, Lower Moutree, and, um, I don't recall a lot of discussion about that being part of a secondary proposal. Has that shifted from being part of the primary to a secondary? Can I get clarification on that, please?
Jackie.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, it's always been part of what we've, we've loosely referred to as the new community near Tasman Village. It has been on the maps that we've previously been looking at. Um, it's a site off Brayburn Road, so not to be confused with the previous two thousand and nineteen, Lower Moutree site, which, um, didn't receive landowner support and is therefore, um, not being progressed. Um, the Lower Moutree site at Brayburn Road, um, sits a little away from the three type, three sites near Tasman Village. In between, we currently have rural three zoning. And a suggestion is that that rural three zoning could be, um, revisited during our resource management review, and perhaps made rural residential density, and then it would knit together those two sites slightly, um, past at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, four point three nine in the report talks about, uh, doing structure planning for, key greenfield areas and neighbourhood planning. Can you just, um, tell me what's the difference between those two? And what is the role of council versus the role of developers where it's primary, where it's privately owned land?
Can cover this one off? Um, so the difference between neighbourhood planning and, and the structure planning is, uh, as far as I see it anyway, is the neighbourhood planning is more the, uh, intensification side of things. Um, so planning for, for added intensification and existing urban, uh, the existing built urban environment. Whereas the structure planning is more for the greenfield areas. Um, now, the, this, I suppose a bit of a blurry line between the role of council versus the role of developers as to who, undertake structure planning, but typically we receive, we receive plans from developers that are, um, site by site, if you like, or stage by stage, or developer by developer, um, for the, to maximise the efficiency of the, of the delivery of infrastructure, um, across the area. It can be a good idea for council to get involved and work with multiple developers over multiple sites, to make sure that that's integrated. Um, so that, that's really where the council's role would sit.
Lovely, thank you for that. Um, just in relation to the, the consultation process, um, there, there's quite an emphasis there on online promotion. There was no mention about whether hard copies will be available anywhere, so a hard copy is going to be available and, you know, libraries and things like that. And then just to extend that question, is usually the summary document, um, of proposals is available as a standalone? Is that proposed to be the case for this as well?
Um, yeah, yes, there will be hard copies available. We're proposing to put them in the libraries. Um, all of the libraries are in the, the two districts and, um, in the council service centres and, um, the, what do you call it, customer service centres. Um, as far as, uh, separate documents, yes, we are looking to have the, um, summary of information. Um, there's a separate part so that people can take that away and, um, also separate, um, submission document, uh, um, you know, forms as well that they can send in.
Wonderful, thank you, yeah. Frequently, people just read the, the summary document. Um, and then next question is just about, um, heights in Tahuna Nui. Um, and it's quite a, um, it's quite an increase from the previous FDS to go, up to four to six. Um, and some of the areas are, I guess historically already had some, some poor infill experiences in those areas. Just wondering, A, how you've chosen that height for all of those areas in Tahuna? And B, any discussions you've had with Waka Katahi about potentially, lining both sides of Tahuna Nui Drive, um, with a lot of extra residences and consequently, you know, potentially vehicle impacts?
Um, so, uh, just to be clear, the, the four to six stories has, um, that, that was, um, presented at the previous workshop that we had. Um, and there was, or, but may have been actually two workshops ago, and then there was, um, we also, in that same, um, workshop had, there was some, uh, concern expressed about the six plus stories that were suggested, but they've been pulled back to the four to six stories. Um, one of the challenges with, the four stories, just keeping things at the four stories and limiting it to that, is that, there's sort of a, a trade-off at that three-story stage, beyond three stories. Um, to make things economically viable for development, you really need to step up to five or six stories. And that's driven by the requirement for things like sprinklers, sprinkler systems and lifts and things like that. Um, so the, the costs jump up quite significantly for developers of those buildings once you get beyond the three stories. So, um, we, we haven't had any specific, um, conversations with Waka, Waka Katahi about, that particular issue. Um, but the, um, that they favour in general, they favour the intensification options as opposed to greenfield options. Um, that, that the requirement for further investment, um, reduces for them in that case, and they see compacted forms being a, a good response to, um, housing demand.
So, sorry, just to clarify, did they comment specifically on Tahuna Nui Drive? Because that's not greenfield currently.
No, not, well, they supported the intensification side of things in general, so intensification of Tahuna Nui, of, of all of the existing urban fo- um, footprints, um, was definitely their preference as opposed to spreading out further.
Yeah, so just following up on that, so at the start, um, you, you discussed, having to review the significance of any submissions that come in, um, as to what changes could be made. So if submitters put in and said Tahuna Nui should be maximum of three stories, for example, um, is that something that would not be considered significant enough? And then also, within the development areas, because within most, you know, like, some four to six stories, there's multiple development areas, yes, you know, next to each other. But, for example, if, um, Tahuna Nui residents said, you know, um, we don't think that development is suitable in Muritai Street, but we do think it's suitable in this other area in Tahuna Nui. Are these the degree of changes that could be made without being classified as significant?
Um, I'm, I'm not entirely sure. We, we haven't gone through that process of looking until we receive that feedback from people. We, we, we don't really know the ex- the extent, you know, we might be able to take localised changes, but, I just wonder whether Susan or Claire, whether you've got any comment on that.
Susan?
Yes, so you, uh, Mr. Mayor, very, uh, the, the point of consultation is to get feedback on what you're proposing. We're proposing, four to six in that area, so if that, the community comes back and says, no, we don't like that, we only want three, and we can still meet our urban development, uh, our yield requirements under the, uh, the NPS urban development, then, um, we can make those sorts of changes. That's exactly the sort of change that we would be expecting to make following consultation, yeah.
Excellent, okay, so, yep, so, yeah, so, um, development areas, heights, all of that, um, can still be adjusted without it, um, yeah, hitting problems down the track.
Definitely, yes.
Thank you.
Uh, is that it, councillor Edgar, uh, deputy mayor Edgar?
That's it for now. I mean, I, I emailed through some minor typo and grammar things, but I'm sure not going to run through them in a meeting.
Yeah, hopefully, um, council staff have received those and, um, they can be picked up as part of the process. So I'll move on, I've got a number of hands up, so deputy mayor Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I've just got a couple of procedural things first, Mayor Tim, just in regard to the interest, which I don't think you called for, just like to declare that we have an interest in the, um, business land at Wakefield. It adjoins that boundary on two sides. And there is a public forum in the agenda, I'm not sure if you're aware of that, Tim.
Yeah, but it's got none written next to it on mine, so.
Okay, good. So just in relation firstly to that business land at, at Wakefield, it is not listed in the list on page fifty-eight, of the document, but it is, uh, favour approved, so not sure if you're aware of that, Jackie.
Through the mayor, sorry, um, councillor Brian, I wasn't aware of that. So it's page fifty-eight that it's missing from, is it?
Yeah, there's a list of them there, but that one's excluded if anyone looks at the list of business land.
Okay, thank you for that.
So that should be relatively minor. Other than that, I'm relatively comfortable with where we've got to, it's been quite a process getting here and, um, just like to thank all the council staff from both councils that have been involved, and I know that, the rural communities are really looking forward to getting this out there and being able to have a look at it and submit on it, so. I think it's good work and that's relatively, um, timely that we put it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Brian. So I have got an order on, just working down the, the list I've got. I've got councillor Courtney, followed by councillor Laurie, councillor Sanson, councillor O'Neill Stevens, councillor Mackenzie, councillor McGee, councillor Fulton and councillor Turley. So we'll just go through it in that order, councillor Courtney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll concur with councillor Brian's remarks and endorse them as well, support them. Um, I think it's a great, it's a good document, sound document, stretching out over thirty years to go out to the community. But my real unease at the moment is about this timeframe. And I, I see on page thirteen of our, you know, commentary here, four point two oh, it proved unachievable within the timeframe to get full consensus on the statement of EWE and Hapu values and aspirations. Now, that is significant, and I wrote down five times this morning, and just in the short space of time, the word, timeframes, um, difficult to accommodate anything of any substance that may come forward, um, from now on in. Uh, we have a tight programme, this was all the things I was writing down. So I want to know, is this tight timeframe a self-imposed one? Mr. Mayor?
Uh, who's answering that? Jackie?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, it's not self-imposed, no. The requirement for the future development strategy comes from the national policy statements on urban development, which requires councils like ourselves to have an FDS in place to inform the next long-term plan. And because certainly at Tasman, work on the next long-term plan starts in the last quarter of this year. Uh, that means that the FDS needs to be settled by, you know, around July. Just with regard to the query on the statements of value and aspirations from EWE, it's probably worth noting that, um, regardless of time available, it was made clear to us that it would be unlikely that all, EWE of Tato Ihu would agree on such a statement in any case. It's seen as a bit of an unrealistic, um, requirement to the national policy statement, because each, each EWE has their own values and aspirations, so. Yes, while all the EWE that have been involved have complained about the very short timescales for this project, I think with regard to that statement, um, we'd be unlikely to ever achieve one that everybody agreed on in any case.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, uh, councillor Laurie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kia ora, everyone. Um, thank you, staff, for the report. I've got a bunch of questions, if it's okay, I'll try to work through them quickly. Um, first of all, why is the new two thousand five hundred dwelling Hera community included, when there was no majority support for its inclusion at the last workshop?
So at the last workshop, it was a fifty-fifty call, um, you know, there was, um, equal number for and against. So the decision was made to bring it to this, um, meeting, where the final, where, you know, obviously, decisions can't be made in, uh, work, the workshop environment, so, um, this is the environment to make that call, I suppose.
Okay, next question, thanks, Chris. Um, how much would it cost to put, uh, water supply and sewage, in for those two thousand five hundred new dwellings in Hera? Do you have a ballpark figure?
A ballpark, we're looking at around about a hundred million dollars. Now, you've got to keep in mind that by the time you spread that between two and a half thousand households, um, and that is, um, almost all of that, in theory, is collected via decent, uh, back, um, from, uh, landowners via DCS, development contribution, sorry. Um, it ends up being, you know, a similar sort of level of development contribution to the current levels that we charge at, at the moment.
Um, is there any particular group pushing the Hera proposal?
No, not in particular. It was identified through the, um, opportunities, opportunities and constraints, um, mapping that we did.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Um, how many vehicle movements is two thousand five hundred new dwellings at Hera likely to add to our network?
But that's a tough one to answer, um, primarily because, um, it depends on how much of a community develops, via, um, just sort of, so that it's self-contained. Um, typically, you allow about ten vehicle movements a day per household, um, but, you know, whether or not they leave Hera to all come to Nelson or not, um, that, that would be something that would require a much more detailed, um, transportation study.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Um, so given that the strategy is likely to lead to, more people becoming dependent on private motor vehicles, given these new communities that we're talking about. Why does the fifty-eight page document not feature any images of cars? It's got pictures of bikes, scooters, buses, even tiny houses, but there are no images of motor vehicles, cars, which is what the strategy will give us more of.
That's certainly not something that we've, uh, got. That's certainly not something that we've guided, um, Hot House themselves, who've done the, the visual design for us. They've been left to pretty much do this based on imagery that they used and very similar imagery from the previous FDS.
Is there a risk that this, this, the images that we're putting out, they could be misleading?
I'm, I'm not sure I can answer that one.
Okay, um, I'm getting there, uh, Mr. Chairman. Couple more questions. Uh, when looking at the urbanization of the Mai Tai Valley, currently there's an application for three hundred and fifty homes in Kaka Valley. This proposal is to add five hundred and fifty more houses into that valet valley, plus two hundred dwellings on the other side of the road on Orchard Flat. Twelve thousand seven hundred and thirty people have signed a petition opposing zone changes to allow urbanization of the Mai Tai Valley. How much consideration did you give to those people's concerns when you included these proposals in the strategy?
Um, we, we certainly, um, had it in the back of our minds that, um, you know, there would be, there was a significant proportion of the population that were, that were, um, opposed to it. Um, but we also assessed the site against all of the outcomes that were agreed in the workshops um, with elected members. And when we assessed it against those, um, those outcomes, um, in, in our multi-criteria analysis, it scored very well. Um, so it's, it's a case of, um, I, I think if it, it scored particularly, you know, poorly or marginally, then maybe there could have been an argument for not including it. But, um, when it scores well under those, then it makes, it made sense to us that it went out for public consultation to the wider public.
What, what happens to the chair? What happens if the Kaka Valley proposal as it stands gets rejected by the independent commissioners?
So through the mayor, I might answer that one. Councillor Laurie. Um, that process is standing on its own two feet in terms of the plan change. So if it's rejected, then the plan change doesn't proceed.
So that means the extra five hundred and fifty dwellings for Kaka Valley that is being proposed here, that, that wouldn't happen, but, but Orchard Flat might still go ahead.
Potentially, yes.
Okay, thanks. Last question. Thank you for your indulgence. You know, um, just have staff considered the possibility that including here a Tasman Village, the new Tasman Village and more housing in the Mai Tai, by including those, those proposals in this document, we're effectively creating a self-fulfilling prophecy situation, where effectively we will be letting the cat out of the bag and these developments will happen, regardless of whether or not necessarily the best thing for Nelson and Tasman.
I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure that's a question and not like a political statement, but, uh, is, is there an answer?
Well, I think, so, um, I think it's a reasonable question. Have they considered?
Is there an answer for, uh, councillor Laurie's question?
I don't think it's political.
I think it's reasonable question. Okay, I might just, I might just try and, um, answer that a little bit, I suppose. I mean, the, the FDS is our strategic document that shows where our growth may occur in the future, but there's nothing stopping any landowner at any stage putting in, um, a private plan change or resource consent application anywhere in the region. So I suppose that, that tension sort of always exists really. We're, we've identified the Tasman Village expansion and Hira community as, um, a secondary part of our proposal. Hopefully that's clear in the documentation, that our, our primary, our core part is the expansion along State Highway Six. But it's there as a secondary part of the proposal for our community to provide their feedback on.
Thanks. I, I understand that, but the difference between someone's going for a private change.
That was the answer to the question, councillor Laurie. So you asked.
Okay, okay.
We're going to be doing and throwing, we're going to be here all day. I think it's also important to remember that we're not just looking at Nelson City. So a place like Mordaweka, which is a large settlement and people have, I guess, um, concerns over the ability for that area to continue to accommodate growth in its current location because of the natural hazard issues around both sea level rise, climate change and flooding, uh, that opportunities that exist in the near vicinity to that. So I guess the assumption everyone's going to drive from these areas into Nelson isn't necessarily the case. So you've got to look at it in context of the Tasman region as well as the, the issues around Nelson. So I think it's also slightly interesting that there's concerns over the amount of intensification and the height of buildings and over, um, other, other greenfield proposals. At the end of the day, to achieve the FDS and meet the requirements of the number of houses, one of those things has to be proceeded with. We can't not do both. I e. start reducing heights, reducing intensification and start chopping out greenfields. At some point, you have to decide one way or the other.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'm just talking about, uh, greenfield and this, these, with these questions. But can I just make the point that there's a difference between someone doing a private plan change and this, which is in a, in effect, an endorsement of these proposed changes?
Yes, thank you for making that point. Uh, moving on to councillor Sanson.
Akioa kato, thank you very much, Mayor King. And, um, thanks to the staff for the report. I've sent through a number of questions. Um, some of those have been asked and answered already, so I'll just, um, knock through the remaining ones that I've got. Um, so page seventeen, four point four four, it talks about the multi-criteria analysis and scoring, which, um, is also an, an appendix to the technical report. The, we had some questions yesterday about that and an updated document was circulated to elected members, which provided greater interpretation of the axes and what the multi-criteria, um, scoring actually is. And I just wondered if that updated table will be included for the public so that people can understand what the, or, or so that there are labels for the numbers across the top?
Yes, it will be.
Okay, that's great. Thanks very much. Um, page thirty-one, it's, uh, the section early public feedback. Was there not strong feedback on protecting environmental and biodiversity outcomes? Because there's no reference to this at all, um, in this kind of summary of feedback.
Yes, there was, but, uh, not at the level that we received for the, the issues that are listed there on that, on page thirty-one, for example.
Right. So I, I guess I'm just referencing the, um, you know, twelve thousand plus people who've raised concerns around environmental and biodiversity outcomes in the Mai Tai Valley that seems pretty significant. I can't imagine that more than, you know, that there was greater concerns than those raised around any of those other issues.
So Mayor King, I might respond to that one. Councillor Sanson, those issues have been dealt with or have been raised through the plan change process. Um, they're at a very, uh, uh, detailed level of, uh, effect. And the most appropriate place for those to be covered off is through that plan change process.
Thank you, um, Officer Barton. Um, so I guess when I look at the proposal, it looks to me like there is proposed housing of up to around eleven hundred on both sides of the, it's, you know, there's obviously the plan change, private plan change, but there's also now proposed housing on the, um, flanks of the hillside between, I think it's Black Hole and Sunday Hole. Around two hundred houses proposed for there, so, um, you don't think that the concerns raised by the public around environmental and biodiversity outcomes apply to the Mai Tai Valley in general, rather than just to Kaka Valley?
So, so again, it's, it's, um, a similar, I have a similar response to that, to, to we, to, um, the one that I gave to councillor Laurie, that we, this was an area that was in the previous FDS that we wanted, and, and we made the decision early on to assess, reassess those areas under the new criteria that were, um, that were developed in response to the new MPS U D. And when we assessed it against those, it, it scored well primarily because of its proximity to, um, Nelson City centre. And so it made sense for us, um, to take that further to public consultation, to get the wider views of the community.
Okay, thanks, Chris. I think my, my question's not around why it was included. It's, my question is why in the summary of early public feedback, there's just no reference at all to, um, environmental and biodiversity concerns? Like, it seems, it seems like, um, it's completely missing when it's such a big concern for so many people in the community. I'm just concerned that it's not, um, you know, that there could be a perception, um, in the wider community that it's not accurately representing public feedback. So I just want to make sure that, um, you know, we're not, um, opening ourselves up for those kinds of, um, calls to be made.
So through Mayor King, I might respond to that again. Uh, in terms of biodiversity and those wider environmental issues, they have been considered in the multi-criteria analysis. We can make that abundantly clear if it's not clear already. And the other component is that the additional area, uh, that has been put forward in the Mai Tai Valley was at the request of Ewe. Um, so we were now trying to seek wider consultation and input on those areas.
Sure, thanks. I mean, it's.
Thank you, Claire. So Rachel, is that yours?
Moving on. Yes, I, I mean, I might, I think my request then would be, can we just, uh, edit the page thirty-one, early public feedback to note that there have been, you know, significant concerns raised around environmental and biodiversity impacts. But I'll leave that on the table. Um, number seven, page thirty-five. Um, the label on the map is Mai Taihe Valley. And I just wondered, is that referencing Mai Tai Valley or the Mai Taihe development?
So we've, um, I think we've ended up using, um, the two terms interchangeably. And, um, we need to, I think we'll have a look through the document, um, after this meeting, just to check, uh, that we're using consistent language there. But, yeah.
So I, I would, yeah, thanks. So I went through the document and I couldn't see one single reference to the word Mai Tai Valley. And I guess because this is a, um, special consultative procedure and the most, you know, as much as I am absolutely supportive of us using indigenous and todaya Maori names for places, um, because this is a really important public consultation and Mai Tai Valley is the most widely known name for Mai Tai Valley. I think we just need to, you know, learning from the experience of the two thousand and nineteen FDS, I think we just have to make sure there is absolutely no room for confusion. So, um, my request would be, can you please put, you know, Mai Tai Valley or Mai Taihe slash Mai Tai Valley so that it's really clear what it is?
Yes, we'll, we'll have a look at that.
Thanks, Chris.
Um, thanks. So, um, page thirty-four lists the outcomes from the FDS. Uh, and then page thirty-seven lists the advantages and disadvantages of the core proposal. But, um, in that list of advantages and disadvantages, there is no reference at all to environmental or biodiversity outcomes in either the advantages or the disadvantages list. And I went through the outcomes and then the advantages and disadvantages list. And pretty much every outcome was referenced in some way in the advantages and disadvantages list, except for environmental or biodiversity outcome. So I guess there seems to be a pattern developing in the document where, um, again, that hasn't been, um, you know, referenced. I'm just wondering why it wasn't included?
Um, so as, as far as, um, that particular issue, it's really down to that, um, scale of what we're looking at. For this one here, we're looking at the, the wider, um, I suppose, if you like, region-wide for a spatial scenario. Once we step down into the multi-criteria analysis, then yes, that's when we start to delve more deeply into the biodiversity and the, um, environmental side of things, um, at, at this wider level. Um, it's, it's not, we, we have avoided those areas already because of, um, we've identified that through our constraints and opportunities mapping.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. So, uh, so councillors, are you going to go through all of these? Because I do note that you did receive responses to all of these questions, uh, so, which are now being repeated as you ask them, so just.
Yeah, I'm, I'm planning just to knock through them, but, um, I mean, my, my understanding is that asking questions in public is not only an opportunity for me to have my questions answered, but also for the public to understand more around whatever issue it is that's come to the table. Would that certainly seems to be the case at Nelson City Council?
You know, that's all good. I'm just checking that you're going through each of these questions that I'm reading the answers to already, but that's fine.
I, I did drop out five questions already, so. Um, page forty-six lists sites with potential development valley and, uh, potential, uh, with development potential in Nelson. But the Mai Tai Valley is excluded, um, and I just wondered why?
No specific reason. This is, um, the mayor's for, um, forward. So it's, um, it's certainly not a complete list in, in any form.
Okay, but it is almost, I mean, is it not pretty much a complete list of where there is, um, proposed development for Nelson except for the Mai Tai Valley? Stoke, if I hear, uh, what's missing is the Mai Tai Valley?
I think if you look at the scale of the areas that are talked about there, you're talking, you know, Stoke's a massive area. Um, if, and if you could include, uh, Mai Tai Valley in the Nelson central area quite easily and that if you treated that, that as the same, in the same scale, quite easily.
Right, okay. I, I have concerns about it. I would ask that Mai Tai Valley be included, please. Um, page fifty-six, N thirty-two, Orchard Flat. So I did, um, an online search on Orchard Flats Nelson and it came up with multiple reference to Orchard Flats in Stoke and Orchard Stream in Stoke, but it didn't reference, um, Orchard Flats in the Mai Tai Valley. So, um, I just wondered if we could edit reference to Orchard Valley throughout the document to put Orchard Valley comma, uh, sorry, Orchard Flats comma Mai Tai Valley, just so that there's no confusion with Orchard Flats in Stoke. And I know that there are a number of sites across the region that have the name of the kind of area or locale and then an identifying kind of, you know, neighbourhood or suburb or valley. So is that possible?
Um, we can certainly look at it. Um, would, there may be some places through the document where it sort of might confuse us, the issue slightly, but, um, we'll have a look at it. Um, or at least make it clear, um, that, um, people need to look at the maps to be sure that they know where we're referring to.
Okay, um, how, how would it, like, I'm, I'm trying to reduce confusion, I think. Um, yeah. Okay, Pam, I've got just a couple more questions. So, um, page sixty-five, N eleven, N one hundred and eleven and N one hundred and twelve, are any of these areas already zoned residential?
Yes, they are zoned residential, but they, the areas that are included haven't been developed, um, yet as, so they're not an urban environment yet. They're still undeveloped, rurally zoned land.
Okay, so I looked at page seventeen for Mapua and that has, that has similar areas, which are, I assume, zoned residential but are not yet developed. And yet they have been shaded in the map as being existing urban areas. Um, so I just wondered why it's being treated differently. And I guess the reason I'm asking this is because I guess we're going out to, um, seek the community's views on future development, um, you know, greenfield versus intensification. Whereas those areas in Stoke that are already zoned residential, there's not gonna, there's no question around whether they're going to be developed or not. Like, they have, you know, they're already zoned for, to be existing urban areas. So it just looks confusing, I think. What are your thoughts on that?
So we've, we have checked, uh, I haven't checked. So we have checked, I haven't checked against Mapua. I do know that the the shading and the labelling of N eleven, one, one, one and one, one, two are correct. But we'll just need to check Mapua to make sure that that's consistent. But the areas that I checked in Tasman against, those areas that you've mentioned were consistent, but we'll check Mapua to make sure that that's correct as well.
Okay, so greenfield can mean anything that's not yet developed, even if it already is zoned residential. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks. Page one hundred and twenty two, landscape. Tasman, so under the category landscape, Tasman is considering draft outstanding natural features. So I just wondered why Nelson's not doing this as one of the development areas identified in this call proposal is within an area of special landscape values per the draft Nelson plan.
So we, the landscape overlays don't change much between those two, the operative and the draft that you were talking about. In fact, there'd be no change in the, in the scoring of the site under landscape values. All we see is a very small strip added along the base of the valley floor in that particular location next to in the lower reaches, if you like, of the valley. Also, you know, the draft provisions don't have any legal basis under the R M A currently.
Okay, so but it's okay for Tasman to be using them?
That's a decision that, Jackie, do you want to add anything there?
Yep, just through Ma King, if I can just add that we didn't have any landscape mapping in our operative plan to use. So we therefore fell back on our draft mapping, which was consulted on in two thousand and twenty one for outstanding natural landscapes and features. And that was our only option essentially.
Okay, thanks, Jackie. And last question again was just page one seventy five, N thirty two, just requested clarify that it's Orchard Flats, Maitei Valley, not Orchard Flats, Stoke. Thanks very much.
Thank you, councillor Sanson. Councillor Mackenzie.
Thank you very much through you, Mr Chair. Just want to endorse the comments that have been made in terms of the effort by staff. You know, it's a huge piece of work and you've worked through challenging times. So thank you very much. The point I want to raise, I think it's more of a problem and I don't have a solution to it. But at the Brightwater Community Meeting last night, this point was made. Firstly, because of COVID, we're having to kind of compromise in a way, our normal process of engaging with communities. So we can't have drop-ins and and we can't actually attend meetings. So we've got Zoom and we've got webinars. You know, what's apparent, sitting in the Brightwater Meeting last night, is that some people in our community, they don't even know what a webinar is. They've never heard of it before. They don't know how to access it. They don't have computers. So, you know, if we want to reach as many people as possible, then, you know, we do have to think about those people. And the other point that was raised is that for people adjoining, for example, greenfield sites, we've done a letter drop and to people's letterboxes or whatever. But if you take, for example, the the site in Jeffries Road in Brightwater, should that site be developed, it would hugely change the whole kind of transport corridors around that area, which will unpack on not only the people adjoining the greenfield site, but many other people out a bit further. And as we know, people don't tend to get engaged unless something's really hitting their back door. And, and many people won't actually realise that potentially this does hit their back door. So I I'm raising these points because this is what's actually coming up from the community. And how do we actually make sure that we reach as many people as possible? Is there something else that we can do? Now, I, you know, I really don't want to suggest some kind of a mailbox drop because, you know, that's old school thinking and, you know, creates a lot of waste and all the rest of it. But, but, but I'm just wanting the team to take it, to take this thought away and see if there's anything else that can actually be done so that we make this information visible, accessible, meaningful, and encourage the most amount of community feedback that we possibly could. So don't answer it, but if you could just think about it, that would be appreciated.
Is there any comments on that from staff? I mean, it is a massive issue in the current environment, exactly how we engage with communities. That said, even in the normal course of events, the degree to which you get that wide ranging views is always limited by people's, you know, interests, as councillor Mackenzie says, unless it's very direct, people tend not to focus on it. Staff comments?
Yep, through Ma King. Yeah, there's, as you say, very valid comments. In addition to a fairly comprehensive online programme, we are mindful of the fact that not all our community is online. So we are also targeting all the local newspapers, in particular the rural newspapers in some of our rural towns. Newsline, which I understand goes to each dwelling in the district, that will be also featuring many articles and sort of centre spreads and things. We're also hoping to get some radio advertising. So we're shortly recording a podcast and hopefully snippets of that will be on local radio stations. And then lastly, we will have hard copies of the summary documents in our libraries and service centres, and people can also make submissions in writing. So we'll certainly give it some more thought, but we've tried our best to try and cover off both those angles. And just the last point about the letters to the landowners. I think we were mindful of trying not to confuse people too much. So we stuck to writing to actual landowners of the sites as opposed to ones that are also adjacent to, because then they might become concerned that their land is therefore potentially earmarked for future development. I think it amounted approximately to about seven or eight hundred letters that went out, which was quite an exercise in itself. So that was a reason for drawing the line there.
Okay, thank you, Jackie. Thank you, councillor Mackenzie. So at this stage, we will take a ten minute break, given we'll be going for approximately an hour. When we come back, the people I have listed to speak, councillor O'Neill Stephens, councillor McGurk, councillor Fulton, councillor Turley and councillor Ogilvy. So we'll reconvene at ten forty with councillor O'Neill Stephens. Right, I think we can reconvene. So I will jump back to the speaking order. And first up, councillor O'Neill Stephens.
Thanks, Tim. Yeah, first question, just sort of a general one about the document itself, and particularly the SOPs. Have we, have we looked over it and through an accessibility lens, and particularly looking at like how would you like to see your town in thirty years' time? Section at the bottom of thirty one, where I think your colour contrast and font probably make it pretty inaccessible. So have we cast that lens over the document?
Who's answering that? Because I note that was also one of the queries in terms of general editing that deputy mayor Edgar raised in terms of some of the contrast, some of the colours, I guess, along the same lines in terms of readability, accessibility. So who wants to answer that one?
Yep, through Ma King, I can answer that one. I don't think we have. So that's a good point. And we'll go back to Hot House and work with them on that. Yes.
Thanks. Next question, just around the greenfield site maps. In the workshop, we discussed this briefly, where at the moment they're just sort of the yellow blocks, but obviously we have sort of in the, in the background of this work, intended or desired densities for those areas. And it was discussed that that would be made available. Is that still going to happen?
So the yields from each of those blocks are in the, sorry, are they, sorry, we're a bit close to this at this point. Are we in the Are we in the, is it in the FDS or the technical documents, Jackie? I think it is in the FDS document, so the yields from each one of them. And on top of that, the plan is to have a public web map that will be available to, that they'll be able to click on any of those areas. And that will come up with the typology of development and the yield and the area and all those sorts of details.
Great, thanks. Then just honing in on the Nelson CBD. So in an earlier draft, the sort of intensification option for the city centre itself was, I believe, six to eight storey buildings. We've now dropped that down to some six-storey buildings. What has been the impact on housing yield from that change? And why has that change been made?
So firstly, the change has been made in response to feedback that we've received at the last workshop. But as far as the yield goes, we it doesn't, that the yield that we have or the capacity that we get based on the capacity calculation has been that that calculation is based on a much more conservative view, the four to six stories rather than that six to eight stories or six plus. So that doesn't change as such. So there's no, there's obviously by going six to eight stories, you you end up with added capacity. But because we've been conservative in our calculations, it doesn't actually change the result.
Thanks. Yeah, I guess personally, I still think there's benefit in having that conversation through this process. Then just looking at those areas around Nelson CBD, you know, two oh into eight nine, in one oh three. These are areas that we've tagged as having very high accessibility and a, I guess, relatively similar in character to some of the other areas, like the word where we've said we're going to see intensification of four to six stories. Why is there a lower intensification planned or proposed for that area?
So there's a whole lot of different factors that come into that. And one of them is the relative value between the building that's on the property and the land value, for example. And whether or not that is therefore feasible to either reduce or demolish the house, which is what would be required for that high density. Or whether there's available land in the back of the section or the front of the section for infill. So it's more a character of that relative value between those two. You know, if you've got a really big, quite high-value house on even a high-value section, the the proportion of the value of the property. If it's, if there's too much value bound up in the house itself, it's not feasible to go and demolish the house.
I guess, I mean, just looking at sort of the land value trends we've seen with the latest revel. Within the lifetime of this document, it's not unimaginable that 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 relationship between, you know, value in the house versus value in the land would change. And I guess I'm keen to understand in terms of this document, though, is it also not where we want to see development? You know, that obviously the site-by-site feasibility will will vary, but.
I think we have to be, you know, the MPS does guide us to look at feasible feasibility as well. And, you know, at some level. So that's what we have taken into account here. But one of the limitations of the of any analysis around this is trying to, whether or not you look at potential future trends and that relationship between the house value and the and the land value. And that that's, you know, some quite serious crystal ball gazing at this point, especially with the environment that we're in currently. So we definitely took a more conservative view of basing it on the current values. And, yeah, I suppose that that is what it is and would need to, you know, we're supposed to be reviewing this document every three years. So there's certainly opportunities to adjust things over time if that relationship changes dramatically.
Thanks. Yeah, I guess I'd just flag that as something that I think could easily garner a lot of question marks within the community as to why there's this differentiation and noting what I guess the characters of those neighbourhoods are. And then just one final question, making. And I I guess it'll be a similar answer, but all of our hills are just looking at residential infill. But you look at, you know, places like Wellington, we've seen actually greater densities done on hills quite successfully with sort of mitigating light impacts because they're on hills. So why, why have we sort of taken that blanket approach of of we're just saying residential infills on our hills?
There's a, yeah, again, it does come back to that feasibility argument. Feasibility becomes a relative thing when you're talking about geographical constraints. So Wellington, for example, you've got to go a long, long way before you find any flatland to to develop. Not so much here in Nelson. And so when you're competing in the marketplace for buyers and, you know, developers are far less likely to look at hilly sites for those higher densities than the easier to build on flatter sites. So that's really just a feasibility thing and recognition of the market that we, that that we don't really have any huge influence over.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Tim.
Thanks, councillor, councillor McGee.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair and through you. Yeah, first item was acknowledging the officers and the consultants for the bring this work forward. I appreciate there's been a huge amount of work to bring in the time constraints. Two areas, a couple of areas I want to focus on is one. And paragraph four point one nine of the report, you talk about the difficulties that EWE and HAPU had participating in the process. And you've highlighted some of the obligations we've got under four point one three. I'm just wondering how you were able to square those difficulties or the lack of, you know, the lack of opportunity for input for some HAPU and some EWE into the process with their obligations under the Government Act.
That is a difficult one. And I think I think what we come back to is best endeavours, really. We've, we've gone and done everything that we can, given the constraints that we face and the environment that we're in at the moment. And and the constraints that they face in the current environment as well, around vulnerable communities with the Covid, with Covid in the in the community. So I think all we can do is, you know, do the best that we possibly can and highlight to them that that, you know, development of these documents is an ongoing process. You know, we, this isn't the last one we're going to be doing. So we need to continue that engagement, if you like, between now and when the next FDS is prepared.
I guess, I suppose, you know, the likelihood that I know Tiara Rais and concerns that we're working through, working through that at the moment. But is that a possibility that perhaps one of the other EWE might have similar or different concerns about other areas or other identified locations? Were you reasonably confident?
Through my King, if I can just respond to that one. And it's probably worth just noting that of all our EWE in Tete-a-'ahu, and with the exception of Nati Kuata and Naitahu and Nati Waiwai, most of the, well, all the other EWE have been involved with this FTS in some shape or form, some more actively than others. But in terms of sites of significance, all the information has consistently been sent round to all EWE of Tete-a'ahu. And we have had a number of responses from different EWE on that point, actually. So I think we've done what we can at this stage.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate, we appreciate the response.
I think it's also important to note that while they may have concerns over some sites, they may also strongly support other sites.
Yeah.
And so their, so their, their views are not necessarily only ones of concern. They may well be ones of support in particular locations. And then there may be cases where some EWE support some sites and others don't. So I don't think it's an easy blanket answer.
All right, now, yeah, I understand, understand the distinction. The other one is that paragraph four point three eight, you talk about the way with the decades. But is there, is there any way that we could sort of identify sort of any phasing of 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 the particular locations? Was that just, we're just saying it, well, here are the sites for the next thirty years.
That's, that's something that would come into play in the implementation plan that's to follow this. And also there'll be a part for each of the long-term plans to to play when it comes to, you know, looking at affordability. And and all of that. So it's not something that we can really define and the and the MPSUD doesn't require us to to define at this stage. Because we're at that much higher level, looking at total capacities rather than, you know, when that delivery needs to take place. Jackie, did you have something to add there?
The only other thing I would add is that, you might remember in the last FTS, we did have sequencing and timing of sites by decade. And, you know, that had quite a short lifespan, really, because Tasman's population has been growing at such a rate that we've had to bring some sites forward, such as Richmond South, for example, that were actually earmarked for for quite far out. So I think it does have limited value when you're in a growth situation. And it'll be largely led by the timing of infrastructure, as Chris has said, which will get sorted out at the long-term plan stage, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And probably the final question, just in terms of the Hira option. And you talked about truck infrastructure. I'm assuming that's basically your three waters and a bit of roading. But does that also include extending our public transport network? Because we went around the, you know, the regional public transport plan. And that wasn't an area that we considered in terms of routes. And likewise, in terms of active transport, you know, extensive feedback from our community about the paucity or lack of active transport routes, basically north of, north of the city. Has that been a factor in terms of the cost of trunk infrastructure or is that additional?
I can't recall off the top of my head that the, you know, the hundred million dollar sort of number that I threw out there was is very much a you know, a very, very high level, exactly. And something that would need time to, would need time to refine. Yeah, so not quite sure off the top of my head. I could have a look at that for you if I want, but if you wanted me to. But from, there is definitely some transport infrastructure allowed for in there. Yeah.
No, I'll leave it at that, thanks.
Thank you, councillor McCur, councillor Turley.
Oh, not me, but I was next.
Sorry, I'm through the chair. I thought Kate was next too, but that's fine.
Well, I'm happy whichever of you wishes to go next, but there's been a number of Nelson City councillors spoken recently. I thought it might be a chance to have a Tasman District councillor speak.
Okay, thank you. Apologies, Kate. I'm just wondering, with the dissemination of information to the community, I think people are a bit daunted at turning up at inside buildings and where there are a lot of other people and perhaps not feeling confident to speak. So there have been situations in Nelson City in the past where councillors and staff have, you know, perhaps just a couple have been there with a chair and outside supermarkets or in car parks or by the library. And, you know, people will open up and check there. So that's just a point I wanted to make. My concern, my question really is around Waka Kotahai. Obviously, they want to save money, but if they want intensification too, they have to be, we have to have the assurance that they're going to upgrade the transport systems to meet the needs of the community. And I'm thinking in particular of State Highway Six. The, I would really, you know, it's not fit for purpose. It's the main arterial route from the south in and out. The intersections need upgrading to make them safe. And in particular, Ellis Street with State Highway Six in Brightwater. There's, you know, four very busy roads converge there and there has been a history of accidents and, you know, serious injury. Also, Katania Heights and Pitfair Road and Wakefield. So all these things, you know, that for them to say that they prefer intensification because it's going to save them money. I'm sorry, it isn't. So they need to be made aware of that. And definitely State Highway Six needs separated cycleways because, and I know in Brightwater, I have people all the time saying they would bike in to Richmond for work. But, you know, it's the logging trucks, it's the fact that there's, there's a lot of traffic, the volumes are high and there's no separated cycleway. So, yeah, I just want to make sure that we push back to Waka Kotahai and our staff going to be engaging with them further.
Someone willing to answer that question? I do know there is the Great Taste Trail does run from Brightwater to Richmond and actually all the way into Nelson.
I know it does, but the the cyclists who are going to work, the working people, they're getting their kids to school and things. And and then they're not going to meander around the river and on a gravel track, you know. They want to whip up and down the the main highway there. And if you go to Christchurch or Hamilton or anywhere, the the main arterial routes are far better than what we've got out here. So I agree, Tim.
There is a slight difference between Hamilton and Christchurch, several hundred thousand people. Right, question about Waka Kotahai's role today or conversations around State Highway upgrades? Any answer?
Yeah, so through the mayor, I'll have a go. And then I think Dwayne Fletcher and Drew are on the call, so they can maybe chip in as well. But just in terms of engagement so far, we have been engaging with all stakeholders, as I mentioned at the beginning. Waka Kotahai have shown a clear preference for growth via intensification because they're most focused on obviously emissions reduction, mode shift, the type of transport we're using, that mode shifting and resilience to climate change. And we're having another session with them in later in this month. But Dwayne or Drew, do you have anything to add?
And through the chair, I might have said something briefly. I mean, we're in constant discussions with Waka Kotahai around issues around the district and as I'm sure Nelson staff are as well. You know, we have raised the issue of Ellis Street and State Highway Six with them. Apologies. And they view that as an adequate intersection and their treatment would actually be to to lower the speed limit, which they actually may well be considering at some stage in the future, as opposed to changing the intersection. Probably the only other thing I would point out is that we're, Waka Kotahai have a perspective that if growth and development impact on the network at points like intersections and things like that, they will often say, well, it's a, it's a growth impact on their network. That's for council to pick up or councils to pick up. And so they will ask us to, you know, meet that cost instead of them. We may well get a Waka Kotahai subsidy, but it won't be a hundred percent funded like it would be if they pick it up. So, yeah, I just, just wanted to reassure councillors that these kinds of discussions are ongoing. I know that for the future development strategy, Waka Kotahai staff were engaged. I know that, for example, we've had quite a few discussions with them around the pit fewer State Highway Six intersection at Wakefield, things like that. So if the question is, are they engaged and are we continuing to engage on the answer is differently.
Thanks, Dwayne. Councillor Fulton.
Thanks, Nick. Look, I have a couple of questions about climate change. I guess I've asked a lot of these questions already and I thought my feedback was being incorporated. So probably I'm curious why it hasn't been. On page thirty-one, there's some really On page thirty-one, there's some really great quotes from the community, which talks about sustainability. And the quote in yellow, it talks about sustainability at the forefront of decision-making. And the quote in blue, it talks about taking bold, locally focused climate measures. So the community clearly wants us to respond with a climate lens. Yet on page thirty-four of our document, which we hashed out quite significantly in workshops, there's no mention of, um, mitigation through building, so through how we build our houses differently into the future, we're more sustainable. So number one talks about greenhouse gas emissions reduction through land use and transport. It's silent on, um, decreasing greenhouse gas emissions through, um, thermal efficiency, um, and solar panels. Number four talks about a range of housing choices, provides, meets the different needs of the community, including affordability. So we talk about affordability there, we don't talk about sustainability there. We don't talk about, um, sustainable housing options, uh, using sustainable construction materials. Again, thermal efficiency and number, eight, we talk about resilient and adapting to the likely future effects of climate change. But again, we're silent on decreasing our emissions. I guess I'm curious why. And then on page fifty, I think it's fifty, which is the actual climate change page. It, it's the same, there's a narrative on reducing greenhouse gas emissions in the context of, um, through transport, because transport is a key contributor to greenhouse gas emissions. It's silent on the fact that Huntley Power Station is producing greenhouse gas emissions to produce energy for our house, houses. And so the way houses are built is really key for the future. Can I just get some feedback as to why that page is silent on it as well?
Um, so, at the last workshop, um, we originally had, um, some, would included, we're proposing to include, uh, some case studies, if you like, of sustainable, um, building. But, um, through the feedback we had at that workshop, it was decided that, that the FTS wasn't really the place for those examples. That's more the building code or, you know, documents of, uh, that come after this, if you like. Um, so there was, that, that was the feedback we received at the, at the last workshop. So that is where we have ended up, where we are.
But that doesn't answer the ques, my questions around the wording within the document. You've got a whole page on climate change, yet you're silent on, we're talking about future development and you're silent on future development, um, reducing its emissions. And you're silent on it and your objectives as well.
So again, that, that's where we come back to the MPSUD. And the MPSUD certainly guides us through, um, the process. And it goes and very much has a focus on emissions reductions as a result of, um, location of development as opposed to the, the, just the type of development. So, uh, that's where that focus on intensification has come in. It doesn't provide any guidance to us on or push us in the direction of allowing for, you know, accounting for building type and that sort of thing.
So you've got a picture of a tiny house, all the other houses are pictures of seventies, eighties houses throughout the document. As, um, councillor Matt points out, there's pictures of buses and bicycles, but we've got garages. We have no solar panels on any of our images, images. We have, um, no, um, green roofs or living walls on our apartment buildings. We have no m- models of houses of the future, which reflect our values around climate change, yet we have bikes and buses.
So I think, I think, I think.
Future housing, it's a future housing development.
I think we did, we did cover this in the last workshop and I think you raised the same points. And the discussion was that this is, and the feedback, I think I asked for a show of hands or whoever was chairing it, did about inclusion in the FDS of, um, housing types. And I think it was agreed that that was a step down the track in terms of relationship to future processes that will, uh, obviously implement the FDS. If we're going to get down into the number of photos and what contains what, I think we're not going to get very far. We've got to focus at the higher level and clearly climate change emissions are a huge part of the conversation and undoubtedly will form part of the feedback. So, um, yeah, I think your question has been asked and answered.
So, so we are going to talk about housing of the future and we're going to be silent around emissions reduction of the housing topology through this entire document. We're comfortable with that.
Uh, well, that was the feedback we got last time, that we didn't want to include, um, examples in the FDS itself in relation to different housing topologies and the potential impact on emissions or greenhouse gases or climate change. So that was the feedback we got last time, so that's what the staff, this document on. So whether, whether we're all comfortable or not, I guess we'll find out when we get to voting on the document itself.
So page five, it's intentional, it is.
Councillor Fulton, yeah, councillor Fulton. I've asked the question several times, you've asked the question several times, you've received an answer and.
Please don't interrupt me councillor Tim. Me, Tim, I let you finish, please don't interrupt.
Councillor Fulton, I'm just trying to operate the meeting so we get through what we need to get through. You've asked the question, you've had an answer, you've made it very clear what your view is. And when we come to moving of a resolution and voting, uh, we will see what people's comfort level is. That's the process that we work through. So if you have another, if you have another question, please ask it.
So my question for the staff, not for you, Nick, Tim, is are the staff comfortable that the document is silent on reducing our emissions through housing topology?
I think, I think we're comfortable that the document reflects the requirements that are set out by the MPSUD, which define what it needs to be included in this future development strategy.
And I have one last question, um, Nick, Tim. Does the MPS require us to only set out what's set out in the MPS? Or can we be bolder than that and set out more than that? Because that's what the community is expecting us to do.
Um, the MPSUD sets out, if you like, the minimum provisions. Yes, we could include other provisions if we wanted and they weren't in conflict with the MPSUD. That's my understanding.
So last question, we can talk about affordability? And that's not set out in the MPSUD?
That's correct, and so that's a particular issue raised by the community.
So the community's raised an issue around climate change, we're not talking about it. Okay, thank you, me, me, Tim, I just wanted to be clear on what we can and can't talk about. It sounds like we could talk about it if we wanted to, but we're choosing not to. So I'm really clear, we're choosing not to.
Point of order, point of order, Mr Chair.
Thank you councillor Fulton.
Thank you, Mayor Tim.
Point of order.
Yes councillor Skinner.
Yeah, point of order, councillor Fulton, um, disappointing, I think it's very disrespectful to yourself, Mr Chair, you're doing a very good job there. I think it was very disrespectful to Fulton's time with the rest of the council here. I remind people this is on a public meeting and it's a very poor affection and disrespectful to councillors. A point of order on that behaviour.
I, I, I'm not sure it's entirely a point of order, but, um, I, I'll note the point. Uh, I don't intend to rule on it. I am moving on to the next, uh, speaker, which is councillor Ogilvy.
Thank you, Mayor King. And I want to first of all acknowledge the staff, because it's been a a huge and long effort, this FDS, very contentious, as we've just heard, and, uh, it's going to be ongoing. Uh, my particular interest was in the inclusion of Brayburn Road in the Tasman sort of village area. Because Brayburn Road identifies itself as primarily low-mutiny rather than Tasman. And as we're seeing, the extent of this Tasman village is now going from, say, Marriage's Road, reasonably close to Maupur, all the way through, uh, Tasman Township, call it that, and Harley Road Development, and now into Brayburn Road, which seems new. And I'm just wondering how many dwellings are included in that much larger development proposal now than it was initially?
Jackie.
Yeah, so through Mayor King, um, so the Brayburn Road Low-Mutiny Site has always been, um, part of the mix in the workshops that we've been going through. And the Brayburn Road site by itself would accommodate potentially about a thousand dwellings if developed to reasonable densities. Uh, the reason for including it as part of the, uh, new community for Tasman Village is really, I guess, servicing-led in that if we did, if the community tells us that they favor the Tasman Village expansion and the council therefore plans to, to, um, service it, the Brayburn Road site could be serviced as well, uh, on way to those, those Tasman Village sites. And in between the Brayburn Road site and the Tasman Village sites, we've currently got lots of land zone rural three. Um, as I mentioned at the beginning, it's possible that the, um, Tasman Environment Plan, the new resource management plan could look at a review of that zone and potentially, um, change it to something like rural residential and then that would knit those sort of two areas together.
Right, thanks Jackie. Following our question then, to what extent does the cost of infrastructure come into this FDS? In, in terms of the Tasman area we've just been talking about, but also in terms of, uh, climate change impacts and even cultural, marine cultural concerns, particularly with wastewater treatment plants, both in Motaweka and in Bell's Island. So in terms of looking twenty to twenty fifty-two and beyond, what's the involvement of the infrastructure in the whole FDS format?
So the infrastructure component is very important for the FDS. Uh, we had a number of criteria in the multi-criteria assessment that, um, assessed each site for the easiness of being able to service it or not. And as I've mentioned, if we were to embark on, uh, a massive servicing programme for the expansion of Tasman Village, I believe it would be in the ballpark area of a hundred million dollars as well, very similar to Hira. Then it would obviously make sense to also maximize those efficiencies and service other sites on the way. And so, uh, Dwayne, I don't know if you have anything further to add on that?
Um, through, through the chair, yeah, just to add that, um, yeah, all of the infrastructure from the point it goes into a trunk main through to the treatment's been considered as part of this process. So if you look at the infrastructure map, for example, you'll see, uh, you know, an additional trunk main to the Bell Island, um, that will be necessary at some stage in the future. Um, I, I think I mentioned one point or another in the past that, um, the, the wastewater treatment plant, um, at, uh, Motaweka wasn't included, um, e- even though actually it is necessary for growth, which is a point I think you made previously councillor, but that's because its primary driver is not growth. It's a, it's a consent-related, um, conditions.
Exactly, thanks, thanks, Dwayne.
Thank you councillor Ogilvy.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yep, absolutely, yep.
Uh, and this is the seed of a rise factor in the whole of the FDS. It's a fact of consideration, but wherever it's mentioned, the figures used are the extreme figures. They're also called predictions rather than probably a, a less than word like projections. And the figures that the Tasman District Council given, I think November of last year, for example, shows in twenty fifty-two, quite a wide range, consider the rise, twenty-five centimeters as a low figure, but the extreme was forty, maybe forty-five. And then for the hundred-year figure, twenty-twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, it was sixty-one centimeters is the low figure, one point six or one point seven for the high figure. But wherever it's been discussed in the FDS, it's the extreme figure which is being used. And I think, I don't mind that, but I think we ought to be showing the range rather than just the extreme figure. Can that be discussed or described?
Um, through the mayor, I will check with the relevant staff on that, who've been advising me in that area. But I understand that we have been following, um, latest guidance from the Minister for Environment, but I, I will double check on that.
Jackie, thank you, but it's just the range which I think ought to be there rather than the, the extreme. And even that extreme is based on a, uh, a global temperature rise of greater than two degrees Celsius and virtually no emissions in the meantime. So there's lots of factors in that seed of a rise, uh, uh, figure you're giving through the FDS. So thank you.
I suppose just a final, just a final point, sorry, through the mayor. Um, obviously with the FDS, we, we are trying to be conservative in our planning for future locations for development. So that could be why we have focused on the, the most severe potential, if you like.
Right, but I don't think we should frighten people too much because the realities can vary between now and twenty fifty-two and of course a hundred years' time.
Thank you councillor Ogilvy.
Thank you.
Just to clarify who I've got next, so councillor Butler, councillor Mailing, uh, Mayor Rees and then councillor Edgar and then councillor Winslet. So at some point, we do need to get to a point of discussing actual resolutions because we do have a timeframe of twelve thirty for this meeting. So people just bear that in mind as we go through, councillor Butler.
Yeah, thank, thank you. And, yeah, and I'd like to acknowledge the work done by staff. Um, I, I'd just like to look at page twenty-nine, um, the, in the summary document. And I'm just wondering, um, about the purpose of this large, uh, flow chart in there. Um, and I, I think that it's difficult for, um, the community to understand how the future development strategy relates to, um, long-term plans, our financial policies and that kind of thing. And having this flow chart in there makes it look as if it's a straight road to those things. Um, and it uses the word informs, large number of other council plans. And that's really not consistent with what we've been hearing this morning, that actually there are a lot of other factors that, um, um, shape these, shape the future plans. So I, I'm just wondering whether it's worth taking out that big diagram, which takes up a lot of space and, um, maybe replace it with something that's much smaller. Um, and then there'd be a bit of space then to cover off these, um, points, which I think are important to a community about, um, uh, affordable housing, which I know is mentioned in there, but it's, it is just hidden in the text. And, um, biodiversity and that kind of thing, to acknowledge a bit more, um, upfront that where those things fit, um, in, in the future development strategy. So having a more of a kind of horizontal approach to it, rather than making it look as if it leads directly to, um, these other lower-level policies and things like that. So, yeah, that's what just been a comment and a question as to whether or not that has been thought about.
Um, through the mayor, um, no, it hasn't. Um, the purpose of that flow diagram there is to try and explain to people how the FDS does work. Um, as you're aware, our councillor's taken it on board, um, quite intrinsically really, since the last one we adopted in two thousand and nineteen, and, and it has informed, um, all those other plans. It's certainly our starting point for our, for our growth model, which then informs our long-term plan. And it's also our starting point for rezonings, as we've seen, um, with our, with our latest plan change coming forward for rezoning the land. So, um, apologies if that diagram's not very clear, if that's the issue. I don't think making it small is going to help, I don't know. It was our attempt to try and explain how it fits within the council plans, really.
Okay, thank you. I, I, you know, for me, um, I, I, it, it doesn't represent to me really how it fits within the council plans. Um, but that just may be my way of reading it. And maybe the problem is the word informs, because that makes it look as if it's just a direct line to these other plans, which is, um, actually not the way that it is.
I thank you councillor Butler, councillor Mailing.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Tim. Um, I'd just first of all like to, we acknowledge the staff, but also the councillors that have put in a huge amount of work over five or six, um, workshops. And I just want to remind people that this is a very high-level document. It'll be reviewed regularly and it's a draft for consultation. It'll be reviewed regularly and it's a draft for consultation. So bearing that in mind, I'd like to move the alternative motion to progress this meeting that leaves out Hira at this stage. Um, because I don't see support for Hira around the Nelson City councillors. And I think I asked a question in an earlier workshop, and and hopefully Chris can answer this. We can still meet our um requirements without having that particular township included. But I do want to see the Tasman one included. So I'm happy to move the alternative motion that leaves Hira out to try and make some progress this morning.
I'm happy to second that.
Uh, thank you Deputy Mayor Edgar. I think you councillor Mailing, so it has been moved and seconded. Thank you both. Uh, I'll now move on to uh Mayor Reese.
Hi, Kyoa Koto. There's um Mayor Tim, there's just a couple of alternative additional clauses to add to that um to that matter that I probably just want to cover off now. Um. So with the this is just to make sure, just given the um in certain times we're in for people's availability, uh that we don't have to come back to the joint committee in the event that one of the members of the committee or more than one is unavailable for hearing. So the other resolutions, we passed one at Nelson City Council. But I think it needs to be done by joint committee. I think you've done the same thing at Tasman.
Yeah, so we now generally have those sort of clauses in all our appointment processes for panels because of the uncertainty that exists. So uh if the mover and second are happy with the inclusion of those two additional clauses, providing the opportunity to appoint um alternate members should someone be unavailable.
I'm happy.
I'm happy.
Thank you.
Right, okay, thank you. I just have um uh one set of sort of focus questions, and so it's just picking up on um the conversation from the officers earlier on, on the challenges around um that's set out in the report around hapu and Ewi engagement. And so I've just got a few questions on that one. One, the first one is in relation to how was, how is customary title treated in your assessment criteria?
So through the mayor, um, it hasn't been treated in any particular way. Um, we have, last year in October, we invited suggestions from the community and from Ewi as well for any potential sites that are available uh for development in their mind, for housing or business development. We've had a lot of hui with Ewi running alongside this process and have tried to accommodate any suggestions as much as we can. And we have had a few sites that have come forward from Ewi that we have um included for assessment. Um, but that's as far as it's gone.
Okay, so so just thinking about the legislative context around that, I I just question the appropriateness of seeking public input on land that may be customary title. I'm I'm just just wondering if that is is lining up with our it it would be consistent with our T T obligations in terms of this process? And also the clauses when they within the N P S on um engagement with Ewi hapu and incorporating aspirations.
Through the mayor, I can't answer any further on that question, but I know, I think um Barry Johnson and Jenna Neema are on the call. I don't know if they can help in any way.
They could, that would be great.
Any comment from either Barry or Jenna?
Uh, through you, Mayor. Um, I guess my comment would be, um, sites are assessed regardless of land tenure. Um, and it's the same whether we're going for a plan change as well. So um ownership, under the law, ownership is not really a consideration around consultation. Um, I would put in that. So as Jackie said, um, we've been working closely with with Ewi, and that includes the development arms, the likes of Block Two and Enrate and to identify sites. But when it comes to um community consultation on future strategies and where our growth goes, then um under the law, then everyone has an opportunity to come to provide feedback in relation to where our communities grow and whether or not we zone certain parts of land. Thank you.
Okay, just I'd look, I just, I'll just leave that with you to think about because um in terms of the very, the change in the N P S this time and the very clear um importance of of reflecting hapu and Ewi aspirations in our relationship. I'm not overly convinced that that is, everyone gets treated the same in terms of of, you know, there are, there are other statutory obligations that are sitting there. So I'll just leave that and say I I I probably would want some convincing that that's the appropriate way to treat it, but it is where it is today. The other part is just in terms of that, is that hapu engagement. Uh, you've written in the report how you had some challenges and actually um fulfilling it probably in the way I think as officers that you you would like to have done, because just because of the timeframe and and also just just the the real challenge about all of the things that everyone's being engaged on. But I I just wanted to sort of reflect and and make sure that you have documented that you were engaging with hapu. So when you're, a- and I raise this because some concerns have been raised with me that you've been engaging with a named land owner, but not with hapu. And I just want to check that with you, that you're satisfied that you used your best endeavors to undertake that hapu engagement.
From the Nelson side, yes, I can definitely confirm that. We've um worked pretty hard to to um try and get that engagement going, but primarily due to the challenges around COVID more than anything else and not being able to meet face to face. Um, that's been a real limiting factor in in the sort, in the whole process.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor Reese.
Oh, sorry, Mayor Tim, I just wanted to test, I wanted to comment on that as well. And then I've just got a suggestion for the document.
Yes, I mean, through uh making, yeah, we've also gone to extraordinary efforts really to try and involve hapu as well as Ewi, and we did. I would just succeed in one hui. Um, would like to have had more, but um in the time available and with the COVID restrictions, that's all that's been possible at this stage.
Okay, just well, and just reflecting those answers and the report, there was quite extensive commentary in the report, but I don't think I saw that carry over and I may have missed it into the actual um consultation document. And I so just check on that. I I did a quick look to see whether we'd captured that. And I'm just a question for the officers as to, I actually think it would be worth you acknowledging that if you haven't in the consultation document. Um, and and so that we're having a, you know, so that we're actually set in the context because I think we should be upfront about the things that have been really challenging. And and I guess what we're doing in this process is um councillor Mailing said before, you know, this is a continuous process, and if there are other ways, you know, that we we, you know, we'll build on this as we go. Um, so just reflection on the offices, and again, if the rest of the joint committee were happy to include some commentary to reflect those paragraphs in the in the report.
Who wants to cover that off?
Um, I think, I think we will certainly have a look at it. Um, and yeah, and and like you say, highlight that, you know, what what we have done and the challenges. Um, and but I I I agree with you that um the most important thing is highlighting that this is an ongoing process that we, you know, we need to continue that in those attempts to engage between now and right the way through to the next F D S that we do. We can't just treat it as, okay, we've done this F D S now and wait until twelve months before the next one before we start to engage again. That's just not going to be feasible to um to be able to get good engagement. We need to, that needs to be an ongoing thing.
I think so. Do you think we need to um note that in the resolution, or are you comfortable that um we allow that editorial change if there's a, if there's general nodding around the table here?
Yeah, look, I'm happy. I think it's editor, it's really just um carrying something across from the wider F D S document into the summary document. Um, so I think that I don't see that as needing a specific resolution to do.
Thank you. That's all.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Edgar, and then I've got councillor, councillor Winsley and councillor Fulton.
Uh, thank you. Just a quick question. Um. Uh, sorry, our software isn't searchable for the report, but I don't recall mention of the Tahunanui Structure Plan. Can someone just let me know what the status of that is? And then where it's would sit in this hierarchy and whether we should be making reference to it?
Um, I'm I'm not entirely sure, to be honest. Um, one thing we've been grappling with um over the last few weeks is how we um deal with previous um growth plans and structure plans and all that sort of things. And where we've got to is um, that's really something for the final resolutions down the, down the track for deliberation. Um, that's at the point where i- if, for example, the F D S was to um supersede any of these other documents, then there'd need to be a resolution to cover that off um once the final document was determined.
Right, so I guess then in any final report, it would be important to know if there are existing documents that have been approved and signed off that could end up being made redundant by virtue of decisions made um through the F D S. That would be um important to know. Um. Okay, thank you. Um. Sorry, I just had one more question. I've gone blank for a second. Um, I'll let you go on to councillor Winsley.
Uh, thank you councillor, Deputy Mayor Edgar, councillor Winsley.
Yeah, thank you. I've got three questions. Um, well, I had one question, but now I've got three apologies. First is leaving out Hira. Um. Can I have confirmation that that won't impact on Tasman? It's my understanding that in that, in the F D S, we had that twenty four percent of intensification, twenty four percent of the growth in Tasman is from intensification, seventy six greenfield. Nelson was sixty five percent growth from intensification, thirty five percent greenfield. But with Hira, it came down to fifty five percent intensification, forty five percent greenfield. So the expectation is if we, if we remove Hira is, has been done in this resolution, Nelson will accommodate those figures with intensification, not pushing out to Tasman.
I think, um, so the those um areas in the secondary part of the proposal aren't needed strictly to meet the um the demand that we're projecting. There are additional areas to be considered by the community under the consult, during this consultation and essentially allow us some some space to move if, for example, some of, one of the other areas was, there was a a huge backlash against a particular area or, you know, there there's still a process to come from here, if you like. And so we need some uh flexibility.
Yeah.
And that those two areas allow for that. But not needed strictly for, if all the other areas are taken into consideration.
I I I think I understand you, and I did hear you say that they're not needed, but I look at it holistically. So following consultation, if it comes back, because Nelson City Council has a, you know, there's a lot of very active groups, if I can push it that way. If there's a lot of pushback from Nelson City in relation to, we don't want this, we don't want that, we don't want high-rise, we don't want productive land. The end result probably, unless we're going to go through a special consultative process, will be that Tasman will absorb uh a lot, a lion's share of the growth, is it not? If we take Hira out, we're taking something off the table before we put it out to our community, and I have concerns about where that's going to lead us. I mean, yeah, I don't know if you're going to comment on that.
Well, through the mayor, that is possible, I think, yeah. Um. Don't know if Chris agrees, but um if we've already lost one of the large greenfield options, and we do have opposition to intensification in Nelson, then I think as Merkin mentioned at the start, then yeah, there's um, there's not as much opportunity left. And it means that Tasman could be accommodating more, yes.
But I, but I also think that I I agree with Jackie, but that's on the basis that um if you include the Tasman Village area that you also, you know, in the in Tasman, for example, all of the um development of all of the greenfield areas, including Tasman Village area, happens all at once. Um, you you know, if if projections for increase in household numbers are correct, then that's not necessarily going to be the case. It's not necessarily going to see all that development happen all at once. And so um, you know, you're not going to develop Tasman Village as well as all of the other greenfield areas or within the same tenure period, for example. So there'll be some, it will depend on the rate of development.
Yeah. Uh, thank you. I guess the less development, Nelson, the more development in Tasman, and we're eating up our protective land very fast. So I I do, I can't support this. I have concerns about removing Hira because I think it should stay in, and I think it needs to go out to our community, and I and I feel uncomfortable as a Tasman District councillor with it being removed. So anyway, that's just my statement around that. I I did have a question around the um points that councillor Thornton um discussed. So, um, yeah, so do other councils put those matters in there, F D S then? Because I understand that we can meet our requirements without putting those um matters in, but is it usual for other councils to put those in?
So through the mayor, there aren't actually many future development strategies that exist in the country. Um, I think we were, we were one of the first, and I believe certainly as of about six months ago, there was only actually two others um in the country. There are councils working on them at the moment. But I think there's a general agreement that's been held that it's not the role of the F D S to set out and building desire requirements and building standards. It's too high a level document for that, even if those standards may achieve climate change objectives. That's something which flows through uh the rezoning process and the resource consent process.
Um, so I guess my question is that if if the consultation goes through the process and those issues do come back as being very important to our community, um, my understanding is that we then couldn't put them in because they haven't been included in this, and that would also trigger the special consultative process? Is that right?
Uh, some, someone can provide an answer to that, but I suspect it wouldn't dramatically alter the numbers or the scale or the infrastructure provision or those really high-level. I suspect that sort of change wouldn't require a re-consultation. Because effectively it's advice or information as opposed to a significant change to the number of or proposed mix of housing sites and development. Who's answering that?
Susan around, Susan, are you there? You?
Yep, I'm here. So in terms of the, you know, if we wanted to add Hira back in, yes, it would. If we want, if we weren't able to meet, uh, uh, sorry, it would.
So Susan, just just to clarify, the question is not about Hira. The question's in relation to uh information around house building typology, the impact on. Uh, yeah, so if things like that were suggested to be added in via consultation, it didn't alter the number of houses, the areas that are being proposed, that could be included without going back out to consultation.
Well, it depends on what was being asked to be included. I think that, you know, if it's just general comments about the fact that councils council would support, um, you know, smaller, tinier homes or would support um things, then that that's probably okay. But if you're talking about um making statements that would say that only X type of houses could be built somewhere, then that would would.
Yeah, I don't, I suspect we can't do that in this process.
Yeah.
There's nothing in this process that goes to that degree of control, so.
Yeah.
I think the answer is, yeah, general statements.
Yeah.
The answer is it probably could change, councillor Winsley, without a re- re- uh consultation.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Can I just ask my third question, which was my question until I heard all the discussion? And that was around page fifty three of the report and whether we're doing enough to encourage intensification in areas where we do envisage using productive land. Because it looks like we only envisage it going up to medium density, and I'm pretty firm on the fact that if we are going to use productive land, I would like it to be used productively for the maximum number of housing yield. It follows on from what um um councillor O'Neill Stephens was saying as well, because It follows on from what councillor O'Neill Stephens was saying as well, because you know, there's an awful lot of kind of what I call vanity projects with lifestyle blocks and, and, you know, that's not a good use of productive land. So are we doing enough? Who wants to answer that?
So I'll have a go through the mayor. So the proposal that may go out for consultation has managed to select sites that are not highly productive. The exceptions to that would be part of the, one of the Tasman village sites and also those couple of light industrial potential sites at Brightwater and Wakefield, which we've kind of tried to highlight to see if the community feels we need them. So we've managed to find sites on the whole without using highly productive land. And in terms of the densities of intensification for the Tasman towns, those were obviously discussed at workshops and I think broadly felt to be acceptable. We've got sort of four to six stories in Richmond and then largely up to three stories in Brightwater, Wakefield and Motuaka. That's the kind of scales that we've got for our towns. So that was my understanding that those were broadly right.
Yeah, now I guess it's a judgment call. I'd probably sit at the further end of the spectrum from other councillors. But I do know that we went through the workshop process with that. Um, yeah, okay. Well, thank you. I mean, if it doesn't, if it doesn't go through, I'll flag that I'll move the alternate resolution with Hira then. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Wensley, councillor Skinner, then councillor Fulton.
Just more commentary before we go into debate. Yeah, I myself took any heads up, Mr Chair. I can't support this recommendation without Hira in it. It was something discussed at workshop and opposite to what councillor Laurie was stating that nobody was supporting Hira.
Point of order, point of order, Mr Chair, point of order. I did not say that. I said that there was not majority support for Hira, which Chris Paulson confirmed.
So just, just to be clear, that is what councillor Laurie said. He said there was not clear, there was not majority support. It was confirmed by Chris that, and indications in the workshop, it was effectively 50/50. And on that basis, that is why we brought back two alternatives, one of which has now been moved. So just for clarity, that is where we sit at the moment. So if we now move on to the discussion.
My apologies, I heard, my apologies, I stand to be corrected, I'll check it. I heard that there was no support, but just my statement there in regards, I can't support this amendment without those. We had discussed that and I think it's important that goes out to public to know that we've looked at all sorts of options and we can get the feedback on that. And also I think it's very important that Hira is in that, in that mix, but I won't debate that with question time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Skinner, councillor Fulton.
I put my hand up to debate. Are we in debating or are we in questions?
So I'm about to draw a line under questions, given the fact that I have no further questions on the table currently. So I'll leave it open to councillors. We can enter the debate now or would you like to take one more short break? It won't be 10 minutes, it'll only be five before we start the debate, given we're aiming to wrap up by 12:30. So is that a break? Five minutes, right? So it's a five-minute break. We'll come back at 11:51 and at that point we'll open it up. The resolution's been moved and seconded and it'll be open for debate and then we'll move to put it.
I can debate first, thanks. That'd be great. Thanks. in housing and a, and a housing and a future development strategy. I think the community expects us to be thinking about that. And I think it expects us to be thinking about that, whether we're building a six-story apartment building in Tōhōnānoi or whether we're building a village out in Hira. And if you had taken the time to reflect that, then perhaps the community wouldn't be so concerned. So, so I think that there is some work to be done on this document in terms of being bold and visionary of the kinds of houses within the kinds of communities we're seeking to create in the future. And I'm not going to support a future development strategy that doesn't reflect that. So I won't be supporting either at the moment, even if Hira isn't there, but I would love to. And, and I just feel like there's some key sentences in the community and the outcomes on page 34, which could reflect that and in the outcomes on page 50, which could reflect that. And then I would have supported the document quite happily, but at this point in time, I'm not.
Thank you councillor Fulton, councillor Laurie. Councillor Laurie. If not, I'll go on to councillor Noonan.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Not sure what's happened to councillor Laurie. Look, I'm comfortable with supporting this proposal going out to the public. I'm a big believer in hearing what they've got to say and it's very important that we do hear from them. They haven't had, apart from the people that we've, we have discussed, the general public haven't had a lot of say on it. And I think it's time for them to tell us what they're thinking. There's quite a lot of material in there. So I think it's perfect. No, I don't think it's perfect, but I think it's important that we hear what the public have got to say. So I'm supportive of the proposal going out for consultation and look forward to the public responding. And I hope we do, I've heard a little bit about how we're going to communicate with the public and I just hope that we get a really good response. Thank you, Mr Chair, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Noonan. I'll go back to councillor Laurie. Welcome back.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Again, thanks to the staff and everyone. Listen, I was going to vote against the initial, original recommendation for a long list of reasons. But then councillor Kit Mailing went and messed up my plans. So I think the strategy is not the intensification over greenfield, proactive transport, emission reducing, productive land protecting strategy that it appears. It talks about all of these things and yet 61% of the 29,000 new homes in the strategy are being produced through, are not being produced through intensification. And that really, really troubles me. Most of it is greenfield. Most of it is doing things the way we've always done them at a time that is crying out for change and for innovation. But despite all of this, I will vote for the amended recommendation because I believe a bird in the hand is worth two in the bush. And I believe that taking Hira out of the strategy is a bird worth voting for. That said, I have grave concerns about the 1,100 houses now proposed for the Maitei. And I really hope the public really tells us what they think about that and tells us what they think about the whole strategy. I think that they, they actually deserve a more progressive 21st century plan. And I hope that's what they tell us. So I'm voting for the recommendation as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Laurie, Deputy Mayor Edgar.
Oh, thank you. Look, I'm voting for the resolution. Primarily, the future development strategy is about urban growth and Hira is not an urban area. Whatever we like to call it, it's just not. People don't live in Hira for the urban environment. The FDS is a key document for informing our infrastructure strategies. And yet, NCC has firstly prioritized infrastructure, sorry, intensification and infill. And secondly, and consequently prioritize our infrastructure to support growth in our urban areas and our CBD. And so including Hira is a secondary proposal, especially when it's not needed to meet any of the growth projections. And I think that's really important. It doesn't mean a negative impact on Tasman because the numbers, it's clearly stated, were not needed to meet the growth projections. All that does, if we were to include it, is it serves to undermine our intensification objectives and potentially splinter where we need to allocate our infrastructure spending. And it also undermines some of our key transportation and low emission objectives. So, and specifically as it relates to the FDS outcomes, expansion of Hira doesn't meet, you know, outcome one, two, three and eight at least. And if we look at page 36, we'll note that including Hira actually reduces intensification significantly. So I cannot support, I wouldn't have supported the original resolutions with Hira in there. I think we need to focus on an urban strategy as it is meant to be and Hira is not that. Thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Edgar, councillor Tuffnell.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chair, Mr Mayor. I support the motion going forward. It would be extremely interesting to see what the public at large have in their mind. I was a little bit confused as far as the Hira thing was concerned, but listening to the various arguments, no, leave it out and I will support the motion as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tuffnell, councillor Sanson.
Thank you, Mayor King, Kiu Rukato. So I'm speaking against this future development strategy. I would like to acknowledge the significant work of staff, but I have grave concerns about the strategy. From a climate change perspective, we need to be doing things differently now, not in three years' time or six years' time when we review future development strategies. I think a strategy that goes out that prioritizes greenfield expansion over intensification is a strategy of the past and we need to be doing things differently. This particular document is silent on community concerns around the environmental and biodiversity impacts of greenfield expansion. It's also silent on community concerns around housing expansion into the Maitei. Whether or not you agree with housing expansion into the Maitei, we should have at least acknowledged that there is significant concerns around this in the community. There are a number of areas in the strategy that could be perceived as confusing and we know well that there is huge concern from the community around this issue in relation to the 2019 FDS. And again, whether or not you agree with housing expansion and expansion to greenfield areas and into the Maitei, we should be doing everything we can to minimize the risk in this space going forwards. Yep. And so that's it for me. And I just really urge the community to submit on this. It's going to be hopefully a fairly straightforward process. And we obviously need to hear from people. Yeah, their views on the vision they see for our region going forwards. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Sanson, councillor McGurk, then councillor O'Neill Stephens, councillor Skinner and councillor Mackenzie.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Chair. I'm, I'll speak in broad, in broad support of the future development study. And having that, I do have some misgivings about some of the things that are in there. But I think it's important that we put out what we have as our very best effort for, for consultation in the community, because I think it's important we hear their view rather than sort of trying to colour it with our own biases and own thinking. Yeah, by its very nature, a future development study does involve, you know, does involve compromise. And there's very clear preference from earlier feedback, intensification within the urban boundary and around our basically more commercial centres seems to be the preferred option. But I suspect the, the round. But I suspect the reality is that the intensification is not going to deal with the amount of growth that we have to, that this community, that all these communities have had to confront in the last decade or two, and likely do in the future. So it does mean we do have to make some clear compromises, I guess, and some of them might be fairly unpalatable and unpleasant ones to make. We all talk about intensification and the multi-story buildings, but something that councillor Wensley said before is that people are quick to say, but not next door or not in our particular neighbourhood. Those are the sorts of choices that we're going to have to make. We said that we don't want productive, our productive land, and there's been some quite significant no-go areas in terms of where we are thinking of developing in terms of protecting our productive soils and lands, particularly in the rural areas out in the Tasman. So it does mean that Nelson does have to pick up its fair share of the heavy lifting as, as we go forward. I have some misgivings about leaving, taking Hira out. I, I have some pretty clear views about the merits of that sort of development, but they're my views. If we do take it out, it's gone forever, and it's not something we can put back in. And whether I, I think the last time it has come in, there's been a very strong mix of views about, about her, and I'm not sure that it's a step in the right, taking it out of the stages is probably the right thing. I might be some merit in leaving it in to have a view, but I'll, I'll listen to the debate about that. But anyway, yeah, intensifications is the preferred option, and that's acknowledged. And within the urban boundary around the commercial centre, Nelson needs to pick up its fair share and do the heavy lifting in terms of development, and for that reason, I will support it. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, councillor McGurk. Councillor O'Neill Stephens.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Look, everyone at this meeting knows we're in a housing crisis. We've had consistent news stories highlighting the deep personal impact that this is having on our community. We know that this crisis is costing lives, harming the development and success of Aitui, holding back economic development and forcing residents out of this region. Housing does not sit in an isolated side of it. It's the building blocks of community. And urban sprawl has led to the loss of productive land, increased congestion, less connection, and ultimately actually a drop in happiness. And as local leaders, we need to be driving the conversations around the changes we have to make to provide enough homes for everyone and to deliver enough supply to increase the affordability of housing. And we, we really need to be making sure that these developments enhance our community wellbeing and the mode of te tāo. And in that sense, I, I really commend the proposed outcomes from this FDS. And while greenfield developments may be required to deliver sufficient homes, we know that intensification remains the key to seeing success. So I support the removal of Hira from this proposal as a development that would be counter to the outcomes this FDS seeks to achieve. However, I, I can't support the changes that have been made around intensification hikes and the exclusion of certain key accessible neighbourhoods that could be ripe for intensification in the right hands. While there's a need to provide enough feasible housing as defined by the NPSUD, nothing prevents this document from being more visionary. Watering down our proposal now, dropping our heights and not having the discussion with our community about how their neighbourhoods may need to change if we want a community that welcomes all of our residents, shoots ourselves in the foot and weakens the conversations we've, we'll have before we even have them. Auckland's Unitary Plan was a bold proposal, but it's been one of the very few success stories in terms of housing affordability in this country, leveling off a steep increase despite broader nationwide trends. And if we want to see the same, we've got to be bold. So I, I can't support this document in its current form, and while I'm supportive of the removal of Hira, without having that broader conversation around intensification and how we will have to change. I, I can't support signing this out yet, but regardless of the outcome of today's meetings, I, I want to thank the huge mahi of staff and consultants. And I, I really hope to see plenty of discussion and feedback from the community, and I look forward to hearing their insights. Thank you.
I think you, councillor. Councillor Skinner.
Thank you for that. I'll be brief. Hey, I thank you for staff with a huge project, I don't think public and knows how much effort and time goes into putting this out in this, trying to strategize here. I support what we have in our documents. I support what we are, original recommendation. We have workshops, and workshops, as pointed out, are not where decisions made. They're not dictated by majority views or votes or opinions. Each of us reflect a portion, greater or smaller, of a community, and that's why I was impressed with Hira being in there. When it comes to housing, there's a shortage of housing right across Nelson. It's not just people working and living in the CBD or the middle of Stoke or Lutuhuna. Housing is needed throughout our region, and Nelson North gets left out time and time again. And development out there and the needs of people and the growth out there, both working out there and travelling to and fro from there. I think we need to relook, at least keep that for the community to feedback. If we don't have it in there for the community feedback, as, as councillor McGurk rightly put, it would be lost, an option lost forever. And it may well, when it comes to our voting and decision-making on it, we may, may decide to not including development out there. But we must go at the community. We must hear their needs because I'm hearing it right now. Nelson North is overlooked. And we, I seen the documentation, we're looking at supporting development along Highway Six, and Hira is very much of Highway Six. And if we're only looking from a CBD, Nelson CBD, south to Tasman, we're missing out on a huge part of our Nelson region. So I plead that we go out with a documentation, with the discussions, what we, minor or major topics that we have all been privy to in this report. And I want to make sure that our public have a chance of privy to that and then can give us that feedback. By all means, when it comes back to us, obviously at the table, we can make those decisions and choose what we think is best. But once again, workshops aren't where decisions are made. Community gives us feedback and then we make the decisions. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we just heard-
Thank you, councillor Skinner.
Mr. Chairman, could I just very quickly say that we've heard two speakers say that if Hira is not included, it is lost forever? That is not the case, is it? Because there'll be another-
Everyone's had, gonna have their opportunity to speak. People have got their perspectives. Whether it is or isn't lost forever will be a matter for further conversation in the future. Look, I, I don't want to get into a cross debate-
Thank you. This is not a place to cross the termining tables debates.
Well, we, we need to do on facts.
Councillor Laurie, you had your opportunity to speak. Councillor Skinner has spoken. I understand you have a disagreement over perspectives on this, but we'll just move on. And if we let everyone have their opportunity to speak, and then we can move to the vote. Councillor Mackenzie.
I thank you, Mr. Chairman. Look, just to say that I'll be supporting the resolution as it has been moved. I think that we need to get the document out. We need to hear from the public. And, and I suspect that deliberations and the final decisions that need to be made are going to be incredibly important. Certainly, people have made a lot of comments about perceived shortcomings in, in the current document. But I think it's a problem for governance, a financial fact, we can't actually get a document out, out to our communities. Personally, I would rather we didn't use one single hectare of productive land. You know, that really, that, that really bites. And I haven't heard anything mentioned this morning about any updates on the national policy statement on productive land. And so I am hoping that actually we're still working in accordance with that and that it doesn't come to be a bit of an obstacle when, when we get to the end. But, but we need to actually hear from our community, and the way to do that is to get a document out. So, so I'll be supporting the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mackenzie. Councillor Ogilvie.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm just concerned that the Hira issue is actually distracting the whole debate about whether this is consultation or not. And I feel that it ought to go out to the public and including Hira. And the decision on Hira or Tasman or productive land is a decision for a later date. So at present, I would be opposing the current proposal on the, on the debate.
Thank you, councillor Ogilvie. Councillor Turley.
Thank you, Mayor King. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the staff on their mahi, and I think it is important that we get the community's view. Hira provides an option to protect highly productive land in Tasman. And so if you're giving any thought to that, then you need to vote to keep Hira, in my opinion. And I do think that Tasman has carried the load with growth and housing, and I think it is time that Nelson stepped up. I mean, this, this isn't the final decision, but keep it in and let the community have a say. You're there to represent your community. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Turley. Councillor Wensley.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, look, I, I agree with deputy mayor Edgar in what she said, that Hira is not an urban area. But I do believe that taking it out will have a practical impact on Tasman if we look at this holistically. It's not enough to say that it's not needed to meet growth projections. And I understand the argument that it encourages intensification if it is left out. But I don't actually think that intensification is going to happen in Nelson to a degree that is anticipated in this FDS. As councillor Turley said, Nelson has not to date picked up the development. And, you know, I don't see much indication that it will in the future, and Tasman is carrying the lion's share and has over the last few years, and that's the majority of that is greenfield. That is the practicality of what we're talking about. Forget what's written on the paper. The practicality is Tasman is carrying the lion's share in its greenfield development. So that is why I foreshadowed the alternate resolution with Hira in. Voting for this is voting for more greenfield development in Tasman, and I can't support that. And by taking it out, we're effectively saying we don't want to hear what the community says about that. So for all of you that said, let's put this to the community, you're not putting the full document to the community, and I cannot support that.
Thank you, councillor Wensley. Councillor Rainey.
Thanks, Mayor Timmy. I'd like to also thank staff for their hard work on this. It's been a really interesting journey so far. I don't agree that you can compare great, potential greenfield development in, in Hira with greenfield development that's occurring in Tasman. I think it's really quite different. I think that, I, I do absolutely agree with the rest now that the Hira development should not be included. And so I will be supporting the, the motion as it stands at the moment. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Rainey. Councillor, deputy mayor Brian.
Thank you, Mayor King. And just a few comments in closing from me. Once again, thanks to staff and everyone involved in this document and the consultants. And what we do need to think about is that this is a regional document rather than Tasman or Nelson. It's for the whole region. We've got to think if we want intensification, we have to encourage that. It won't happen if we keep providing greenfields aimlessly. So for that reason, I'm happy to support the resolution as it stands. And we need to do more to incentivise people to intensify because that's currently what, not what the market's showing us that people want, unfortunately, and that is using up our land. The other side of that corner is, coin is that we also do need land for housing, business development in the rural communities, Brightwater, Wakefield and further out in the rural heartland of the region. So with that, I'm, as I say, happy to support the reservation. And of course, there's always the concern about productive land and just maintaining as much as that as we can, but there is a balance to be held around providing housing for our whole community. So as I say, I'll support the resolution. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, deputy mayor Brian. Mayor Rees. So just to double check, so councillor Sansom, I think you've already spoken in the debate.
I'm just signal, just, I wanted to signal that I'm going to call for a division. I'm calling for a division now, but I didn't interject, I so just put my hand up.
Thank you. So I'll ask council staff to be ready to vote via division. Mayor Rees and then councillor Hill.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor King. Look, I found it really interesting to listen to the views of elected members, and in many ways, I think they're going to reflect the diversity of views in the community. And I really want, but I want to hear those views because there'll be views that we haven't heard. We know that the office has, you know, had some really genuine challenges engaging with, with, with hapu in a way in this process, and I think we need to make sure that we're giving lots of opportunity for that to happen. I'm really empathetic, and I've spoken on this before about how my view is that Tasman has been carrying the heavy load on housing, and we only need to look at the data to see that. I think that's because there is a flat land, flat land has a real desirability point in terms of ease of building, and it reflects to some degree, although not for very long these days, on the affordability of the, of the, of the land. It's going to escalate every, every week. I think getting the intensification outcomes that we're seeking, as, as deputy mayor Brian said, it's going to require more than just the FDS one tool. It's going to require a lot of tools to actually get that outcome. And we're going to have to think very carefully about how we encourage intensification in terms of the way we develop within neighbourhoods. There's some challenging concepts here. I, I'm not sure I'm up for six stories in Tuhunanoi personally, but I want to hear what the community's got to say. And I'm, I took on board Mr. Porson's comments about the development channel, channel, challenges for, for height and the services that you've got to put in. I look, I'd really encourage councillors who are thinking they want to support this today. If you want to, you know, if you want to, you could test the Hira option to see whether that goes in or out. It's a real balancing act between whether you're going to disincentivise intensification options in Nelson City. I would distinguish between both, both the, the accessibility challenge with that location. And it does, you know, we would have to do some major infrastructure changes, would have to do some major public transport changes to actually get that, get that to work. And that doesn't fit so well with many of our other joint plans around public transport. I think equally, looking at development around, around nodes and centres and villages within Tasman district is, is a logical thing to do rather than spreading out across productive lands. And I'm hearing that very strongly, and I think councillor Wensley's comments about if we're going to allow those developments, then we need to think very carefully what type of development are we going to allow on them? And that, that in terms of the value of the land to delivering supply means intensification should be considered as, as a, really needs to be looked at. I think that's important. But I just, to those of you who are finding this difficult because it doesn't include everything you want and doesn't fit everything I want, I can assure you, I'd like a whole lot more on how we build. But I will accept that we have to make some progress on this. And I think retaining our existing FDS isn't going to give us the, the push for that we needed on, on intensification. And let's get it out there, see what the public have to say. I, I'm hearing it's in the balance there around, around, around Hira. And, you know, if the meeting wants to test it, they could test it now and then, and then resolve that issue and move on with the rest of it. But I think on the balance of the voices I've, I'm hearing, I don't think it would go through today. But just again, thanks to staff for work on this. Job's not done yet. It's a continuous process, and I think that's the other thing to recognise is that if a really good proposal comes forward for developing land that we hadn't seen in this period of time, then we can accept that, and we can do that through private plan change processes or council plan change processes. And that's perfectly within our gambit to be able to do that, and we've seen that in Tasman district, the areas that we had initially thought would come forward, you know, decades out from now are now developed. And that's just a matter of how we have to be flexible. So let's get something out there and get feedback from the community.
Thank you, Mayor Rees. Councillor Hill.
Kiorakato. Through you, Chair. I'm going to support the resolution. There's not much, hasn't been said, is there really? But Hira works against intensification, in my view. It works against accessibility, the idea of reducing travel- Uh, it works against accessibility, um, the idea of reducing travel, consolidating infrastructure. Um, I, I think the document's adequate in terms of, you know, uh, its scope and what, what it, uh, opens out to the community around. Uh, uh, all the views that we might hear, that we hopefully do hear a lot of views. That, I, I think there's an, you know, we'd be here all year if we were looking for a consensus on a perfect document that we were agreed on. Um, that, a lot of work, no easy solutions at all. Um. Just the comments I've heard so, so far in my community about it is, you know, people talking about, oh, I hope you're gonna fix up all the roads. And someone else says, well, I hope you're not gonna build any more roads. So, you know, um. Pretty tricky area, uh, to get resolution to. And I, I think for staff to pull together something that's. Uh, comprehensive enough to, you know, to, um, pre- present, uh, um. Wide, a wide enough scope, uh, I, I, I think they've done really well. Um. And, uh, you know, the, 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 the strategy doesn't, it, 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 it isn't the mechanism for addressing a lot of the other concerns. That are, that are being raised around innovation and, um, you, you know, limiting our impacts is, you know, and, and how we build. So, uh, you know, I'm satisfied there are processes in place that'll help assist that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hill. So we've had a call for a division, um, from councillor Sanson. Just before I come across to councillor Malling for his right of reply, uh. Like, uh, whenever you have a document of two hundred-ish pages, it's very unlikely that everyone's gonna agree with everything that's contained in it. I think has already been mentioned by a number of people, the council staff, through the workshops with us, through working with stakeholders. Through having those conversations with Ewi, which, um, all of the above are gonna need to be ongoing. Have come to a place which, while it's not gonna, uh, make everyone happy, uh, and this sort of process never is. I think provides enough information for people who choose to, to make submissions. I've heard a number of people say in their comments today, the community, they, the public, like it's one large amorphous bunch that all have the same opinion. And clearly it isn't. And that's probably reflected, as Mayor Rees said, uh, in the conversations that we've just had. Uh, and the different views around this table. And if I guess we're supposed to reflect the diversity of opinion across the region. Then the debate that we've had today probably does that. And we should expect a range of different views and feedback, many of which will be contradictory. Uh, and in disagreement, uh, on this document when it goes out for consultation. Ultimately, there's a whole lot more to implementing this and addressing issues around housing and growth and development than just an F T S. And that's also been mentioned, the implementation plan's gonna be crucial, both councils planning documents and the decisions they make around those are gonna be crucial. And ultimately, this requires willing landowners and people to actually build houses. The thing we need to remember is we actually don't build anything, uh, when it comes to housing. We enable, we provide, we make opportunities, but the people who actually do this are landowners. And we could zone all the land we want and whether it's greenfields, brownfields, infill, intensification, high-rise. Without someone willing to take that, uh, and make that investment and physically build those buildings and homes for people. Uh, this will just be a two-hundred-page vision that actually doesn't provide for anything. So ultimately, that is going to need to be, um, addressed. And there are processes that we'll have to go through to achieve that. So I'd just like to thank, um, everyone who's been involved, uh, those who have made comments today. Uh, all the staff and the consultants. And I really look forward to hopefully this going out to the public, receiving their feedback. And I wish those who are sitting on the committee, uh, undertaking those hearings and making recommendations back. The best of luck in doing so because I suspect it is gonna be incredibly challenging. So, uh, Mayor Rees, do you have another comment before I go to write a reply?
Just, just, just Mayor King, that, um. I'm never sure whose standing orders we're operating under today, but, um, just in case we need to, I'm really hoping that we won't. I will foreshadow that I'll move the other one.
So it has been foreshadowed by councillor Wensley?
Oh, it has been. Okay, excellent. Good. Thank you.
So should this fail, she is foreshadowed, she would move the other resolution. Yep. So I will come back to councillor Malling for a right of reply and then we will put the resolution via division. Councillor Malling.
Sorry, Mayor King, I didn't unmute myself. So I'd just like to, a couple of quick comments that I've been very encouraged by the good debate. And the input from, uh, the elected representatives. But we just need to remember, as, uh, said by the two mayors, it's a high-level document. It will be reviewed reg- regularly and things change. We could have less development because. Growth might slow down. It's happened to us in the past. Two thousand and nine, development stopped. So it's, it's a high-level document that will be reviewed regularly. Whatever we put in it now could be changed in the future. And I encourage people that we get it out there so at least we can have some debate with the public. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Uh, who is running the division process? Uh, and who is going to call out the names?
It's, that's my job. Um, I, I think, Mayor, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Pat. Off you go.
Okay, um, so look, I, I, I don't know, can't tell who's absent. So, um, councillor Butler.
Um, four.
Councillor Dowler.
Against.
Councillor Greening.
Absent.
Absent. Councillor Hill.
Four.
Councillor McKenzie.
Four.
Councillor McNamara. Absent. Councillor Malling.
Four.
Councillor Ogilvy.
Against.
Councillor Tufnell.
Four.
Councillor Turley.
Against.
Councillor Wensley.
Against.
So, you know, Doc, I don't appear to be on your list. It's councillor Brian here.
Oh, sorry, councillor Brian, you're right at the top.
You're at the top. You are there.
Yeah, right.
Councillor Brown.
Four.
Councillor Bowater.
Four.
Councillor Brand.
Against.
Councillor Courtney.
Four.
Councillor Edgar.
Four.
Councillor Fulton.
Uh, against.
Councillor Laurie.
Four.
Councillor McGurk.
Four.
Councillor Noonan.
Four.
Councillor O'Neill Stephens.
Against.
Councillor Rainey.
Four.
Councillor Sanson.
Against.
Councillor Skinner.
Against.
Against. Someone spoke for me there, I think. Against.
Mayor Rees.
Uh, four.
Mayor King.
Four.
So that's four, fifteen and against nine.
So I will declare the resolution carried. Right, uh, so that draws us to the conclusion of today's meeting. Um, I'd like to thank. Uh, everyone very much for the tone by and large in which the, uh, debate has been undertaken. Uh, I understand this is a controversial subject and is not likely to become less controversial over the next few weeks and months. Uh, and as I say, those who are part of the hearing panel have a, a major job in front of them. Uh, and ultimately, we will have an opportunity to debate the final recommendation at, in this forum. Um, before we adopt the final, uh, future development strategy. So. Thank you to councillors, council staff and consultants for their support in the process. And I look forward to seeing you all at the next opportunity for a joint council meeting. And I will now close with kataki. Toia kaurunga, toia kararo, toia kaurato, toia kaua'ho, toia te hiritanga'ata. Karonomu tupo, karonomu tao. Hoi, hoi'e, hui'e, taiki'e.
All right. Thanks, Tim.
Thanks, Tim. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Tim.
Good. Thanks, Tim.
There you are.
Bye.